Twenty twenty-three, I want to, I want to say thank you for coming down. Welcome, everyone. And again, thank you, Commissioner Blackshear and Commissioner Haynes. You guys have really done a lot for the city. So the first on our, item on our agenda is item B, which is the adoption of the agenda. And so commissioners will need a motion. Is there a motion to adopt? It's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Those no, ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Item C, which is the approval of the April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three minutes. Those were sent out and posted before the meeting, and so we'll need a motion to adopt those minutes. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Those no, ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. So before we get to item D, which is the recognition of the council members, which we always call on at first, I just want to, one housekeeping, the only housekeeping item is just please silence your phones, and that way there's not an interruption during the meeting while either commissioners or the public is talking. We really appreciate that. All right, so we take the council members as they come in, and the first council member I saw was Councilman Russ Pulley. Councilman Pulley, you want to come on up? Welcome. Appreciate you coming down today. Yeah, you'll need to push the...
Burkeham and White Rose House.
Yep. That is, oh, the red one? Okay.
Y'all have changed up on me since I've been here. Anyway, I'm here to speak. Thank you very much for all of your service. I'm here to speak on item number thirty-seven, the Lipscomb Institutional Overlay, and I just want to provide information to you about this and a little historical context from my perspective as a district council member who's been there for about seven and a half years, and a couple of things related to community engagement since then. So I was approached by Lipscomb a couple of months ago, maybe, when they decided they wanted to do an amendment to the institutional overlay, and I encouraged them strongly to reach out to the community and engage the community on this issue. And so they did set up community, I know at least one community meeting, and unfortunately, this was at a time when I couldn't make it because of some of the things we were doing relative to the covenant shooting. So they did hold one community meeting, and since taking office, I have heard from community members a concern about hopping over Belmont Boulevard with the institutional overlay being a concern in the community. There's been comments about Lipscomb's position on this, and I don't know, I don't have any idea what Lipscomb has said in the past, and I'm sure you'll hear people say that too today. Since then, and you'll hear Lipscomb's perspective on that, I'm sure, since then I heard from a number of neighbors via email and phone, probably ten to fifteen neighbors, calling and talking about their concerns, and the consistent theme is crossing Belmont Boulevard for the piece that they want to incorporate in the institutional overlay, which is an apartment complex that they use for housing. I will state that the concerns around that are the precedent that is set by moving across Belmont Boulevard, and I also think it's important to note that Lipscomb has, over the years, acquired a number of properties that are outside the institutional overlay on Belmont Boulevard and Grandview and the like, and since they had a change of administration, they seem to have gone in a different direction because they're selling off those properties, which kind of is an indicator, I'm not sure what they want to do on the other side of Belmont Boulevard, but it's important to note they are selling off, and they have sold off a number of the properties that they own over there. So I just wanted to put that on your plate. There have been a few other concerns, but mainly the common theme is hopping across Belmont Boulevard from the neighbors. So I'm not going to take a position on this. I'm going to leave it to the judgment of the Planning Commission and let you guys do your job that you're so good at. And so with that, I'll, I want to thank you for your service and all the diligence that you put behind your job, and I appreciate what you do, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate you coming down. Next, that's Council Lady Hancock.
My, technically, I'm consent, so I'll tend to please stay quiet.
We appreciate that, Council Lady. Thank you. And then I saw Council Lady Benedict. There she is. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. Great to see you. So we'll have a case, it's the McAlpine SP, I think it's number thirty-five. And this is for a specific plan on Gallatin Pike, at the corner of McAlpine and Gallatin Pike. There's three parcels that are part of it.
Council Lady, it's item thirty-four.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, we just want to make sure it's for the record. Item thirty-four. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. Item thirty-four. So the, the, we had community meetings in October, I don't know if you remember, but I was out of the office during the month of October, and I was back in time for the, so Councilmember Mendez covered that meeting for me at my request and gave me thorough notes, and as the result of that, the developer came back with different plans that included most of, a lot of the changes that the community was looking for. That included changes to Ingress Egress on Gallatin Pike. You'll see, when you look at the SP, there is still an alleyway on McAlpine. We would like that removed. If there's, I don't know if NDOT left it in there, I'm not sure why it was left in there, but I would like it removed if we can be, and so that all of the access is on Gallatin Pike. And I, again, I want to go back, the developer made a lot of changes based on the community's feedback. I believe that they, they moved the massing so that it'd be, so it was garages up against the back of the houses on McAlpine. So that was a significant change from having the, the tall height right there. He's a local developer, two District Seven, so he really is interested in making sure the neighbors are taken care of, and, and, and he's one of my constituents, so I want to make sure that he's held to account as well for what he's doing, and he's done, I think, a great job responding to the community's needs. Having said that, there are still concerns. So that alleyway is one. Making sure that the screening behind the garages and backing up to the yard, to the yards of McAlpine, we want to make sure that that is adequate to provide privacy from those garages. The garbage is let, is on the plans that you have, it is centralized garbage. The developer should explain that, sorry, the applicant should explain that, that garbage is now going to be private service, that they're going to take care of, so that he should explain that that's not in the right, that that won't be there. And, and then there's going to be questions from the community also about setbacks. Beyond that, I would like to see, and I just spoke with him to see what his, if he'd be able to do all of those things, so he will address what he's planning to do with all of those things. Additionally, he will commit to making sure that the exterior finishes are a part of the SP or as that additional bill that we send through regarding materials when we have that go through legislatively. So, and then the remaining pieces are, are there any community benefits that we can, can achieve through this? So he was out there and looked at some stormwater items downhill, as we know, stormwater is a concern all over. Want to make sure that stormwater for this development remains on this development, which I know is the law, so we just want to make sure that that happens and that it's not contributing to any stormwater downhill where there currently is standing water anytime we have a heavy rain. Traffic calming is a major issue in this, which is why the alleyway that goes onto McAlpine, that's why that's concerned, is because we don't want people to come out there and then fly down the hill on McAlpine, which is, there's already a lot of traffic that does that. This, one more thing on this, I know I'm talking a long time, this street was on the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. It was ranked twenty-fifth out of twenty-four awards. I was certain they were going to get traffic calming after that through that program by at NDOT. There were two hundred applications that were put in, and so McAlpine was moved much further down the list. I'd like to see if that's something that the developer could do. I'd like you to, to come up with ideas to help make this a bit better for the community in regards to the screening, in regards to the traffic calming, the alleyway access, and then making sure that we memorialize the materials and structure information. So that's, that's the case in front of you, and I appreciate your support, your support of the community as well as, well, of the community. We want to make sure we get this right. It's on Gallatin Pike, it's the second highest ridership route in the city for Wego, and we want to make sure we're massing density on the Pike rather than deep in the neighborhoods. Finally, I actually have a, a, a meeting that I have to be at, at five-thirty. I'm going to be late to that, they're aware, and I'm going to be there at six, so I will be here as long as I can be, but I want to make sure that the public understands that anytime I have a case here, and you guys, I think, know this as well, you all know this as well, Commissioners, I will be watching this replay tomorrow for all of the public comments as well as for your deliberation, which is always very helpful for me before this comes to council. So with that, I look forward to hearing that tomorrow.
Thank you, Council Lady. Hold on one second, we might, the Director has an update on this project.
So I just asked the staff reviewer on this to go out and speak with the applicant. I think most of the councilwoman's comments we could entertain as part of this plan. The alley, however, may be part of a fire mitigation or some type of factor, so I want to make sure that if, if we have a, a request to remove the alley, that we understand the implications from a fire department perspective, and so we're recommending that they defer to entertain that suggestion from the councilwoman, or we can entertain the case here, but I just want to put everyone on notice that that's, that's a health safety factor that I want to make sure that we get right here at the commission before moving it forward.
If that's the case that it remains, Director, if that's the case that it remains, I would ask that it be labeled, signage, speed humps, anything that we can do to make it very intrusive for anybody to use to come in and out that way, so that they're directed to use Gallatin Pike. So if there is a reason, I know we can do speed humps, that emergency vehicles can get by, so, and we can do signage, so, things like that, I would want to make sure we include.
Lisa, do you have an update from the applicant?
Amelia's speaking with the applicant in regards to, I'm sorry. She spoke with the applicant, they needed to make a phone call. We likely just aren't in the position to be able to make those sorts of determinations on the fly without having reviewed with the other agencies.
Thank you. We'll get, we'll try to get an answer as soon as we can, but we appreciate it.
Thank you.
There's some things we can do, and something like an alley is, if it's, has other department implications, then we can, may have to defer it, so we'll keep you posted, Council Lady.
I appreciate it. Well, I'll watch you tomorrow, so thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Council Lady. Council Lady Gamble. You wait? Okay, thank you, Council Lady. Yep, Councilwoman Toomes.
Councilwoman Toomes let me know that she needed to step out into the hall, but that she wasn't intending to talk unless her items were removed from the consent agenda.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Thank you. I don't see any other council members. We want to make sure we get everybody. All right, so seeing no other council members, if they come in, we'll, we'll get them when they, when they come in. So now we are on to, that concludes item D. Now we are on to item E, which is items for deferral withdrawal. And Amelia, you did such a good job last time. You're back.
Such a good time, they let me do it again. I had such a good time, too. Okay, let's get started on tonight's agenda. First, we will read through items E, the items for deferral or withdrawal, starting on page three of your agenda. Item number one, twenty twenty-three Z zero four four PR zero zero one, staff recommendation is to withdraw. Item number two on the agenda, twenty twenty-two SP zero three six zero zero one, Harpeth Reserve, staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. On page four of your agenda, item number three, twenty twenty-three SP zero three two zero zero one, three sixteen Homestead Preliminary SP, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. Item number four, twenty nineteen S zero three nine zero zero two, Payne Road Subdivision, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. Item number five, twenty twenty-three S zero four two zero zero one, St. Luke Presbyterian Church, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. Item number six, twenty twenty-three S zero six three zero zero one, Thornton Grove PUD Phase Four A, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. Item number seven, twenty twenty-three SP zero one nine zero zero one, The Meadows, staff recommendation is to defer to the June eighth Planning Commission meeting. And on page five of your agenda, item number eight, twenty twenty-three SP zero three three zero zero one, one thousand three Douglas Avenue Multifamily, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. Item number nine, twenty twenty-three SP zero four zero 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 one, forty fifty-seven Maxwell Road SP, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. Item number ten, twenty twenty-three SP zero four three zero zero one, Nolan'sville Pike SP, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. Item number eleven, twenty twenty-three SP zero four one zero zero one, three thirty and three thirty-two Homestead Preliminary SP, staff recommendation is defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. On page six of your agenda, item number twelve, twenty nineteen SP zero five three zero zero one, Ackland Park Residential SP, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. Item number thirteen, twenty eighteen S zero five nine zero zero three, Orchards Phase Three, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. Item number fourteen, twenty eighteen S zero five nine zero zero four, Orchards Phase Two, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. Item number fifteen, twenty twenty-one SP zero seven five zero zero one, VT Charlotte Pike Development, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. On page seven of your agenda, item number seventeen A, twenty twenty-one CP zero zero six zero zero one, Bellevue Community Plan Amendment and the associated case, item number seventeen B, twenty twenty-one SP zero six one zero zero one, Bend at Bellevue Ariza SP, staff recommendation for both of those items is to defer to the May twenty-fifth Planning Commission meeting, and I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear has recused on both of those items. Moving on to page ten, item number twenty-four, twenty seventeen SP zero nine one zero zero one, Connect Nashville Amendment, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. Item number twenty-seven, oh, sorry, excuse me, Commissioner Blackshear is recused on item number twenty-four as well. Item number twenty-seven on page ten of your agenda, twenty twenty-two SP zero two one zero zero one, Burkehamstead, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. On page eleven of your agenda, item number twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three SP zero three zero zero one, eighteen oh six and eighteen oh eight Division Street, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. Item number thirty-three, twenty twenty-three SP zero four two zero zero one, fifty forty-three Mount View Preliminary SP, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. On page thirteen of your agenda, item number forty-one, twenty twenty-three zero three five PR zero zero one, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth Planning Commission meeting. On page fourteen of your agenda, item number forty-six, twenty twenty-three Z zero five zero PR zero zero one, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth Planning Commission meeting. Item number forty-seven, twenty twenty-three Z zero five two PR zero zero one, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. And lastly, on page fifteen of your agenda, item number fifty-one, twenty twenty-two S two five three zero zero one, First Revision Lot for seventy-six and seventy-seven Madison Heights, staff recommendation is defer to the May twenty-fifth meeting. Item number fifty-two, twenty twenty-three S zero four five zero zero one, Temple Heights, staff recommendation is to defer to the May twenty-fifth Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Amelia. And so Commissioners, I'll read through these, and Amelia, make sure we get these all correct for the record, so I'm going to read off the following items for deferral or withdrawal. And these are items number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen A, seventeen B, twenty-four, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-three, forty-one, forty-six, forty-seven, fifty-one, and fifty-two. Is that correct?
That's also what I had.
All right, Commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral withdrawal. Is there a motion? It's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Those no, ayes have it, and those items are deferred or withdrawn. Amelia, you've done so well. Again, we're on to the consent agenda.
Okay, let's see if I can do this one just as well. Item F, Consent Agenda. Items noted on the consent agenda, on the tentative consent agenda will be read aloud at the beginning of the meeting to determine if there is opposition present. If there's opposition present, please raise your hand, and the item will be placed on the agenda in the order that they are listed. If no opposition is present, the item will be placed on the consent agenda. Okay, starting on page six of your agenda, item number sixteen, twenty twenty-three zero zero four TX zero zero one, is anyone here in opposition to this item? Were you just pointing?
Let's see, is anyone...
Sorry, is anyone in opposition to this item?
Item number sixteen.
Okay, we'll place that one on the consent agenda.
We need to get these folks an agenda over here. Is there an extra one? Have we run out of copies? We'll get, we'll get y'all an agenda. We'll get you one. We'll make sure everybody's taken care of. Go ahead, Amelia, sorry.
Okay, so item sixteen was on the consent agenda on page six. Moving on to page seven, item eighteen A, twenty twenty-two CP zero zero three zero zero one, Bordeaux White's Creek Haynes Trinity Community Plan Amendment, is anyone here in opposition to that item? And the associated case items, item eighteen B, twenty twenty-two SP zero two nine zero zero one, The Riverside Development, is anyone here in opposition to those items? Not seeing anyone, those items will be placed on the consent agenda, and I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recused from items eighteen A and eighteen B. Moving on to page eight of your agenda, item number nineteen A, twenty twenty-three CP zero 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 two, and nineteen B, twenty twenty-three SP zero two six zero zero one, is anyone here in opposition to those items? Those items will be placed on the agenda, and I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recused from those items. Continuing on page eight of your agenda, item number twenty A, twenty twenty-three P, twenty twenty-three CP zero one one zero zero one, South Nashville Community Plan Amendment, and the associated case items, item twenty B, twenty twenty-three SP zero three seven zero zero one, Brandsford SP, is anyone here in opposition to those items? Not seeing any opposition, those items will be placed on the consent agenda. Moving on to page nine of your agenda, item number twenty-one A, twenty twenty-three CP zero one two zero zero one, and the associated case, twenty twenty, twenty-one B, twenty sixteen SP zero two eight zero zero three, is anyone here in opposition to those items? We do have opposition, those items will be placed on the agenda to be heard. Continuing on page nine of your agenda, item number twenty-three, twenty fourteen SP zero seven three zero zero three, Hermitage Golf Course SP, is there anyone in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Moving on to page ten of the agenda, item number twenty-five, twenty twenty SP zero two one zero 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 three, Foster Street SP, is anyone here in opposition to this item? Not seeing anyone, that item will remain on the consent agenda. Item number twenty-six, twenty twenty-one SP zero eight seven zero zero three, twenty-three oh six Brick Church Pike, is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two SP zero three three zero zero one, Shoreview SP, is anyone here in opposition to this item? That item will be placed on the agenda to be heard tonight. On page eleven of the agenda, item number thirty, twenty twenty-three SP zero three five zero zero one, thirty-three twenty Curtis Street Multifamily, is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number thirty-one, twenty twenty-three SP zero three six zero zero one, Pawnee Trail Residential, is anyone here in opposition to this item? That item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number thirty-two, twenty twenty-three SP zero three eight zero zero one, nineteen thirty-eight Neely's Bend, is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. On page twelve of your agenda, item number thirty-four, twenty twenty-three SP oh four seven oh oh one, McAlpine SP, is there anyone in opposition to this item? That item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. Item number thirty-five, twenty seventeen NHL zero zero two zero zero four, Bel Air Mansion, is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number thirty-six A, twenty twenty-two HL zero zero four zero zero one, and the associated case, thirty-six B, twenty twenty-two NL zero zero three zero zero one, nineteen twenty-six Tenth Avenue, is anyone here in opposition to items thirty-six A or thirty-six B? Those items will remain on the consent agenda. On page thirteen of your agenda, item number thirty-seven, two thousand six IN zero zero one zero one three, Lipscomb University Institutional Overlay, is anyone here in opposition to this item? That item will be placed on the agenda to be heard, and I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recused from that item. Moving on to item thirty-eight, twenty twenty-three Z zero four three PR zero zero one, is anyone here in opposition to item thirty-eight? That item will be, that item will remain on the consent agenda. Item number thirty-nine, twenty twenty-three Z zero four seven PR zero zero one, is anyone here in opposition to item number thirty-nine? Seeing no one, that item will be on the consent agenda. Item number forty, twenty twenty-three Z zero two eight PR zero zero one, is anyone here in opposition to item number forty? Seeing no one, that item will remain on the consent agenda. Item number forty-two, twenty twenty-three Z zero three eight PR zero zero one, is anyone here in opposition to item number forty-two? That item will be on the consent agenda. On page fourteen of your agenda, item number forty-three, twenty twenty-three Z zero four five PR zero zero one, is anyone here in opposition to item number forty-three? That item will remain on the consent agenda. Item number forty-four, twenty twenty-three Z zero four six PR zero zero one, is anyone here in opposition to item number forty-four? That item will remain on the consent agenda. Item number forty-eight, twenty twenty-three Z zero five three PR, oh, my apologies, item forty-eight will be heard tonight. Item number forty-nine on page fifteen of your agenda, twenty twenty-three Z zero six two PR zero zero one, formerly twenty twenty-three SP zero four four zero zero one, is anyone here in opposition to item forty-nine? That item will remain on the consent That item will remain on the consent agenda. Item number 50, 2023 Z 064 PR 001, formerly 2023 SP 029 001. Is anyone here in opposition to item number 50? Seeing no one, that item will be on the consent agenda. That concludes that portion of the consent agenda. And then I will go through and read the captions. As notice for, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Okay, our consent agenda tonight, starting with item 16, 2023 Z 004 TX 001, Text Amendment Related to Access Management Studies. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page seven of your agenda, item number 18A, 2022 CP 003 001, A request to amend the Bordeaux Whites Creek Haynes Trinity Plan by changing from T4 Residential Corridor and Mixed Use Corridor to Mixed Use Corridor along West Trinity Lane. In the associated case, item 18B, 2022 SP 029 001, The Riverside Rezone to SP along Buena Vista Pike and West Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions if the associated plan amendment is approved, and disapprove if the associated plan amendment is not approved. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recused from items 18A and 18B. Moving on to page eight of your agenda, item number 20A, 2023 CP 011 001, South Nashville Immunity Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is to approve. And item 20B, 2023 SP 037 001, Bransford SP, A request to rezone from CN and R6 to SP for properties along Bransford Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions if the associated plan amendment is approved. If the associated plan amendment is not approved, staff recommends disapproval. On page nine of your agenda, item number 23, 2014 SP 073 003, A request to amend a specific plan on a portion of property located at 3939 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page 10 of your agenda, item number 25, 2020 SP 021 003, Foster Street SP. A request to amend a specific plan along Foster Street. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Amelia, hold on one second. If we could, I know there's some, a lot of talking in the back, guys, so if we could just, it's hard to hear sometimes for everybody, and we want to be fair to everyone, so. We appreciate everybody being very, very quiet, and then if you have a conversation, you can always take it out of the room. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, sorry, I'm always the bad guy. I'm a mean person, Stuart tells me that all the time. Okay, go ahead, Amelia.
Okay, continuing on with the consent agenda, on page 10, item 26, 2021 SP 087 003, 2306 Brick Church Pike Amendment. Is a request to amend a specific plan on property at 2306 Brick Church Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Moving on to page 11 of your agenda, item number 30, 2023 SP 035 001, 3320 Curtis Street Multifamily. A request to rezone from R10 to SP for properties along Curtis Street. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 31, 2023 SP 036 001, Pawnee Trail Residential. A request to rezone from RS15 to SP for property at 1231 Pawnee Trail. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 32, 2023 SP 038 001, 1938 Neely's Bend. A request to rezone from RS80 to SP for property at 1938 Neely's Bend. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On item 35, on, sorry, on page 12 of your agenda, item number 35, 2017 NHL 002 004, The Bel Air Mansion Amendment. A request to amend a neighborhood landmark overlay for property at 2250 Levin and Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 36A, 2022 HL 004 001, A request to apply historic landmark overlay district for property at 1926 10th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. In the associated case, 36B, 2022 NL 003 001, A request to apply a neighborhood landmark overlay for property at 1926 10th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Moving on to page 13 of your agenda, item number 38, 2023 Z 043 PR 001, A request to rezone from AR2A to RS30 for property at 4903 Laws Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 39, 2023 Z 047 PR 001, A request to rezone from IWD to MUNA for property at 195 Little Green Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 40, 2023 Z 028 PR 001, A request to rezone from RS5 to R6A for property at 703 29th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 42, 2023 Z 038 PR 001, A request to rezone from RS7.5 to R15 for property at 574 Ewing Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page 14 of your agenda, item number 43, 2023 Z 045 PR 001, A request to rezone from RS5 to R6A for property at 315 Edith Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 44, 2023 Z 046 PR 001, A request to rezone from RS10 to ON for property at 2894 Elm Hill Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page 15 of your agenda, item number 49, 2023 Z 062 PR 001, Formerly 2023 SP 044 001, A request to rezone from CS to MULANS for property located at 3976 Dickerson Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 15, item number 50, 2023 Z 064 PR 001, Formerly 2023 SP 029 001, A request to rezone from AR2A to RS7.5 for property at 4302 Laverne Couchville Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. And item number H on Other Business, item number 53, a memo for Carruthers Crossing Udo. And item 57 to accept the director's report.
Thank you, Amelia, you're out of breath.
You know, I kind of felt myself pacing there.
Yeah, no, it's good, very good. So commissioners, and Amelia, make sure that I, I'm going to list these off, make sure I'm correct. So the items to pass on the consent agenda are the following. Item 16, 18A, 18B, 20A, 20B, 23, 25, 26, 30, 31, 32, 35, 36A, 36B, 38, 39, 40, 42, 43, 44, 49, 50, 53, and 57. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items to pass on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Those no, ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. And so, Director, you've got.
Chairman, it's my understanding we have an update on item 34, which was placed on the items to be heard. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes, that, that's correct.
Hold on, Lisa.
Yes, of course.
Just let's, let everybody, if you're able to leave and your item's been heard, we really appreciate it. Try to swiftly leave quietly, maybe not quietly. But we'll give it, we'll give it a minute. So we'll just, we'll hold one minute. And we've got a lot of seats open up front, so if you're standing, you should, you can comfortably get a chair. The fire marshal would appreciate it. We appreciate it. All right, let's try this again. If everybody could, if you, if you're talking, you're doing the wrong thing. So keep moving out. We could get everybody's attention, please. All right, okay. Director, oh, Lisa, you have an update on item 34.
Indeed, the applicant for item number 34, which is 2023 SP 047 001, McAlpine SP, has requested a one-meeting deferral so that they can continue to work on the items that the council member mentioned during her comments. So that would be deferred to the, to the May 25th meeting.
All right, commissioners, so we'll need a motion to defer item 34. You've heard the explanation, so we'll need a motion to defer item 34. Is there a motion? Motion and a second. It's good, motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Those no, ayes have it. So that item 34 is deferred one meeting. So that leads us to the following items to be heard, which the vice chair always likes me to read this list, and I know that everyone else needs to know this as well. So the items to be considered tonight in public hearing are the following. Items 19A, 19B, 21A, 21B, 22, 28, 37, 45, and 48. Is that correct, Director? Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes.
All right, perfect. So we're on to item 19A to do the presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jordan Donovan, and I will be presenting item 19A. This item is a request to remove the planned collector Ewing Drive extension, which is a planned major road within the Major and Collector Street Plan, also known as the MCSP. This is accomplished by amending a portion of the MCSP. The properties involved in this amendment are 4808 Buena Vista Pike and an unnumbered parcel along Buena Vista Pike indicated with the red outline on the screen. Although the unnumbered parcel along Buena Vista Pike was not referenced in the agenda, both properties were noticed. Access Nashville 2040 is the transportation component of the Nashville Next or General Plan. The MCSP is the implementation tool of Nashville Next. The MCSP is a network of existing roads with planned improvements and future roads. These roads are categorized by environment, street context, and functional design type. This amendment involves the removal of a portion of a planned collector. This portion of planned collector is Ewing Drive Extension and connects Whites Creek Pike with Buena Vista Pike indicated by the dotted purple lines surrounded by the red box. The site, which is approximately 86 acres, is located just west of Whites Creek Pike and Arterial Boulevard and just south of Bradley Parkway. The site is vacant and made up of two parcels, zone RA and RS10. The site is surrounded by residential to the west and north and industrial and agricultural to the east and south. Most of the site is within conservation policy due to the multiple streams present, Whites Creek and Ewing Creek. The remainder of the site is suburban community center and suburban neighborhood evolving. These two streams on the site pose challenges to constructing this planned collector, mainly Whites Creek. Following an extensive review by NDOT and Metro Water, it was determined that this connection is not feasible due to the constraints dealing with crossing Whites Creek. For these reasons, staff recommends the approval of removing the planned collector, Ewing Drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. And before we get, I forgot to mention this, before we get to the next presentation, I usually explain kind of how things are going. So first of all, how, how we do these public hearings. So the first thing is that you need to know is we're all volunteers up here, all of the commissioners. And so we appreciate everybody coming down, and we want you to be able to speak. And we try to run a, a good meeting where everybody can hear, everybody has their time slot to speak and, and do their thing. And so what we do first is the presentation, which is what we're doing, what you just currently heard. Then we'll open the item for public hearing, and then the applicant will have 10 minutes, and then they can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. And then we get everyone wishing to speak in support. We'll line up down the middle of the aisle when I call you up, and everybody gets two minutes. There's a timer right there. And then we'll call everybody that is opposed to it. And then after that, then the applicant gets a two-minute rebuttal. And then we let the councilperson go, and then we'll close the public hearing, and then that's when the commissioners will deliberate. And so I just, I always explain that, just because some people have never been here before. We're a very friendly group, popular to, contrary to popular belief, but we try to be at least friendly and fair. So thank you, Jordan, and now we're ready to hear. Commissioners, we're hearing 19B. We'll hear A and B together and vote on them separately. 19B. Logan.
Evening, commissioners. My name's Logan Elliott with the Planning Department, and I'll present the associated rezoning case, 19B, for the production row SP. The request is to rezone property to SB zoning to permit a mixed-use development, and staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions if the associated Major and Collector Street Plan update is approved, and to disapprove if the associated Major and Collector Street Plan Amendment is not approved. And there's two updates to staff's recommendation that you should have in front of you with a memo. If you don't, I have extras here. But one update is a clarification of the traffic and parking conditions related to roadway improvements and the traffic study that was done for the project. And the other concerns the fallback zoning for the SP. The report references IWD for the fallback zoning when the fallback for the SP is CS Commercial Service, and this will be updated for the application. So looking at the site, the site's approximately 45 and a half acres. It's located on the west side of Whites Creek Pike, which is an Arterial Boulevard, and it's, and the site's located just south of Bradley Parkway. The site's a portion of a property with the larger property being a total of 83 acres, so the subject site's about half of the subject parcel. The site's currently zoned RA and is surrounded by R10 zoning, RS7.5 and RS10 zoning, with some industrial zoning across Whites Creek Pike, warehousing uses in an SP to the south, and active quarry exists on the AR2A property to the east of Whites Creek Pike. The portion of the property that's not included in the application is the portion shaded blue there, and that represents floodplain and floodway associated with Whites Creek, which is on the left-hand side of the screen, and Ewing Creek, which flows in from the right-hand side of the screen, and they converge at the southern tip of the parcel. The policy applied to the site is suburban community center with conservation policy reflecting the environmental features on the site, and the suburban community center policy intends to create and enhance. and the suburban community center policy intends to create and enhance suburban community centers that are generally within a 10- to 20-minute drive of the surrounding residential areas. They're generally pedestrian-friendly areas located at prominent intersections and contain a mixture of uses, and the conservation policy intends to preserve the environmental features in their natural state. So looking at the SP site plan, the plan proposes a mixture of non-residential land uses across four buildings, maximum of 50,000 square feet. The project may rise up to 95 feet, and otherwise the height is limited to 70 feet. The two buildings up front, White's Creek Pike, are the buildings that contain the commercial service-type uses that are identified on the SP plans. And then the two buildings to the rear would contain more warehousing, light industrial, and office-type uses. A single row of parking is located in front of the building, and otherwise there's landscaping along the streetscape of White's Creek Pike. The SP does include a landscape plan that they would be reviewed for with the final site plan application. And with the SP zoning, they're committing to providing 20% more trees on-site than would otherwise be required through their tree density requirements of the zoning code. Additionally, the plan's providing easements for greenways that are planned for in the Metro Parks Master Plan, Plan to Play. And the landscaping plan shows that there would be landscape buffering, those greenway areas from the site here. And additionally, the application is providing for greenway easements on the entire 83-acre parcel, which includes the portion not being zoned SP here, and that the easements for those greenways would need to be finalized with the final site plan application. So in staff's analysis of the SP and review of the suburban community center policy and the conservation policy, we found the proposal to be consistent with the guidance provided for those policies. The proposal limits the building areas and disturbance to outside of the floodplain area with a very minimal amount of the floodplain being disturbed with the site plan, and that disturbance of the floodplain would be held to the stormwater management manual. This site is a bit unique in how it's situated. It's bounded by Riley Parkway to the north, White's Creek to the west, Ewing Creek to the south, with warehousing and industrial areas surrounding it also, which creates a challenge for connecting this site to the surrounding area. But in light of that, staff finds that the intended uses for the site, which include commercial services, would be consistent with the community center policy, and that in addition to those, that the plan is providing an opportunity for employment in this area, which would support this area becoming more of a suburban community center. So given the context of the site and the land uses that are proposed in the site plan that's proposed, staff finds the SP to be consistent with the policy and recommends approval of conditions if the associated case concerning the MCSP amendment is approved and disapproval if the associated case is not approved. And that completes my presentation.
Thank you, Logan. Appreciate that. And so Commissioners, we'll open both of these items for public hearing, 19A and B, and then we'll vote on them separately. But we'll open the public hearing for both. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Welcome. And you have 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal, unless you use it. State your name and address. Thanks.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Only in Nashville can you become from 19 to 1. But it's great to be here tonight. Thank you so much for the time taken to consider as volunteers being here tonight. My name is Kelly Hyatt. I'm a real estate development manager at Al Nire. I'm excited to share a little more about this project with you, the Production Row project. Before I begin, I want to thank the team of leaders and staff that have put in extensive work and time to help us with these plans. Thank you to planning staff working to ensure the plan did meet the policy, and thank you to Councilmember Gamble and Tooms for allowing us to engage with their districts. Al Nire was founded in 1984, and it's in Cincinnati as a family-owned construction company. In 2014, we became 100% employee-owned, and we continue to our culture of ownership mindset and proceed with a level of accountability and intention with each of our projects. We entered the Nashville market in 2015. With our boots-on-the-ground presence emphasized has allowed us to grow our team to 40 employee owners here in the Nashville office. As we manage, as we integrate design-build company, we have architecture, development, construction, construction management all under one roof and work together as one team to deliver the best product to the community. Now, for the project that brings us here tonight. Production Row is a music-oriented campus featuring contemporary, state-of-the-art, office space, production, and live rehearsal space. The facility will span four buildings designed specifically to serve as the music production and adjacent businesses. The extensive campus will serve as an entry point to the industry for job seekers in the White's Creek area that has not previously been available, offering employment and trades such as stage production, sound engineering, and light design. The special state production campus will reach all spectrums of live entertainment, ranging from audio, video, lighting manufacturing, and live event rehearsal spaces. Claire Global, one of the world's premier leaders in audio production, is one of the first companies to commit to making this their new home. Additionally, our very own Soundcheck has had a supportive presence in the community meetings. The Jumper family, who owns Soundcheck, is actually a resident of the White's Creek area. In contrast to typical distribution warehouse or heavy industrial facilities, Production Row will serve as the destination. Our intent is to develop a music and live entertainment-focused hub that will connect the White's Creek community to this industry. As a developer, Al Nire has committed to a minimum of $25,000 to support the White's Creek area and students in the neighborhoods. We look forward to exploring the best partnerships that allow these funds to directly benefit nearby neighborhoods. Our prospective entertainment-based tenants have also expressed desire to give back to the students in this community. Turn it over to our engineer.
Good evening. My name is Travis Todd. I'm with Thompson Hutton. We're handling the civil engineering and landscape architecture on the project. And I just want to echo Kelly's appreciation, working with staff and all the metro departments to get us to this point tonight. For this item, the first thing we looked at with planning was evaluating the highest and best use and looking at the community character policy for the property. The current R8 zoning is not compatible with the T3 suburban community center character policy, so that's why we're here tonight. And then working with Councilmember Gamble and planning staff determined that an SP would be the best route for the project, given its, the unique parameters of what this project is going to be. We consulted with planning regarding the allowed uses, fallback zoning, and overall intent for the development. And as Logan mentioned, planning staff has determined that the development does meet the intent of the T3CC policy. It especially complements the new Green Lane SP that was recently approved on the north side of Riley Parkway. So with that project and what we'll be doing with this project, it's going to bring a new, full, new, mixed-use district to this area of White's Creek. Early in the process, it was identified with Al Nire and the prospective tenants of the project that they wanted to maintain the existing natural resources on the site as much as possible and provide more opportunities for the community to enjoy those. Of the approximately 83-acre parcel that's under contract, this proposal only develops about 44 acres for the music campus, so roughly half of the overall property. And the remaining portion will remain undisturbed and undeveloped. A key aspect of the proposal is that we are completely outside of the floodway, the floodway and the associated buffers, really trying to respect those and that densely forested edge along the streams on the site. During the community engagement portion of the project, as we went out and talked to the community, we heard concerns regarding downstream flooding. And of course, as you know, we'll meet all Metro Stormwater requirements for the project. We've already sized our stormwater measures, and we'll be complying with those regulations. The green infrastructure practices that we're proposing for the site will ensure that we encourage infiltration and overall volume reduction into the adjacent streams. And then finally, we know that keeping the development outside the floodplain is also going to aid in that and ensure there's no adverse impacts downstream from our project. In addition, you'll see on slides here in a moment, the plan provides a path for dedicating over 1.3 miles of greenway easements as part of this project and an agreement reached with Metro Parks and the Baltz family, who are the current owners of the property. We've also been working with NDOT on the roadway improvements, which include a deceleration lane, new curb and gutter with drainage, MCSP-compliant sidewalk, and street trees. Overall, that with the greenway easements that we're proposing will provide an avenue to connect to a larger pedestrian network and loop in the area and will achieve a significant portion of the Parks and Greenways master plan as this development and others in the area move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anything else, guys?
Sorry, one quick other thought.
Yeah.
As you know, the recommendation here today is only the first step of the project to move to Metro Council. We have been part of four public meetings held by councilmembers over District 3 and neighboring District 2. We have also met directly with interested neighborhood groups and individuals to work towards addressing their feedback. We have deferred this project from appearing before you four times in order to thoughtfully incorporate many of the comments we heard from the community. Based upon the community feedback, we have adjusted the permitted uses to include the retail and restaurants, the CS, among others. We committed to the 20% above the minimum tree density units, as Logan mentioned, and added architectural form and design restrictions to protect against heavy truck traffic users on this site. We are committed to continuing communications with Councilmember Gamble, Councilmember Tooms, and their constituents. In addition to the $25,000 of support we have currently committed, a successful rezoning will ultimately provide the opportunity for this project to give back to the community with firmer financial commitments to create scholarships and job opportunities. With that, we respectfully request a positive recommendation to Metro Council for rezoning approval, as recommended by planning staff, subject to the conditions of their report. We also request the two minutes we retained for rebuttal.
Two minutes for rebuttal. Sounds good. And so, anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Seeing none? You want to speak in support, sir? Come on up. Welcome. And just state your name and address for the record, and you've got two minutes.
My name's Ben Jumper. I am the owner of Soundcheck. My wife and I own Soundcheck. Excuse me. My address is 4798 Lichten Pike in White's Creek. We also own three parcels of land on White's Creek. We have, our business has been on Callan Street for 30 years, and we have been displaced by the Oracle Project that's taking over Callan Street. And we have diligently searched for a home, and hopefully we found one. So we really need a place. We have a client list of over 1,200 musicians, and you all would recognize most of their names that rehearse at Soundcheck and store at Soundcheck. So we really need this new home, and I would ask that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your time. Scott Davis. It's another sad day, but a good day for Soundcheck. They've been awesome neighbors for the last 30 or some years. Every year, even after I got off the council, Ben Jumper and the Soundcheck family have always contributed toys to McFerrin Park Neighbors whenever Carlos at the center would have the Christmas toy drive, also to Nehemiah Church, and also to other churches in the community. More importantly also, they would never leave. I believe it's the Salvation Army and the sheriff that do the Make-A-Wish trees around town, and they always take off all the names. And I'm going to miss them dearly. Councilwoman Gamble, Councilwoman Tooms, you are getting a really, really great community partner. And I just can't sing Soundcheck and their family and the Jumper families praises so much, and their clients have been such a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, my name is John Michael. I'm an attorney at the Thompson Burton Law Firm, 1801 West End Avenue here in Nashville. We represent the Baltz family, the owners of the property, who obviously stand in support of the SP as proposed and would humbly ask your not only consideration but approval and recommendation to council for its ultimate approval. One of the key points that we wanted to address on behalf of the ownership group was that the key emphasis needs to be placed on the crucial role of stormwater management as part of the analysis. So frequently, particularly in this part of our county, we hear a lot of concerns from folks who live there and have lived there for many, many years about, "But I flooded horribly in 2010. Do you understand how White's Creek responds to major storm events?" These are important points of consideration. We would note here that Thompson Hutton, particularly my colleague Travis Todd, that Logan Bowman and the team at Metro Stormwater, who have been hands-on with this project since its inception, are people who know what they're doing. I'm a land use lawyer. I'm not an engineer with any sort of a hydrologic specialty. I've read a lot of these reports. I've seen a million of these site plans, but they know what we're doing. We're excited to have the opportunity to rely on their expertise, and we certainly encourage members of the Commission to do the same. Ultimately, with that kind of team in place, we're confident that we will be improving the stormwater function in this area, not making it worse, not even just breaking even, but the project is designed to improve the status quo, particularly given that the stormwater regulations that are in place in the year 2023 are decidedly more stringent than the ones that were in place pre-May of 2010. As a result, we think we presented you with an excellent project through our partners who seek to develop this now. And again, our firm, representing the landowners, are excited to be part of the project in this way. Again, we humbly request your support. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Welcome. Come on up. Yeah, well, so per our rules, just so everybody knows, per our rules, if it's a community organization and you do prior written requests, then we do five minutes. So go ahead. Just state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Claudia Humphrey Henry. My address is 760 Rowan Drive, Nashville, Tennessee 37207. And I want to thank you for your time this evening. I'm speaking on behalf of Haynes Manor Neighborhood Association, where I serve as president. I am addressing the Commission to share my community's comments regarding the SP known as Production Row. Haynes Manor is a subdivision of the Bordeaux North Nashville community. It began in 1964 as a middle-class development for African-Americans. The streets are named after iconic African-Americans such as W. D. Du Bois, James Baldwin, and Augusta Savage. Our neighborhood was also a refuge for African-Americans who were displaced by Nashville's urban renewals, specifically the highway program that cut through North Nashville. Currently, there are a little under 1,000 homes, and our residents are generational families, holding on to their family's American dream. And we are proud of what our great-grandsons and parents started, and we are fighting hard to maintain the status quo. We recently received our conservation overlay. Nevertheless, our dreams are not as respected as other Nashville communities. We have been the victim of unfair developments that disregard the community's wishes under Nashville's community character policy. For example, the last industrial project dumped on our community, the grease plant, which is south of this project. This is an example of the wealthy gentrifying community like Katie Hill moving a plant into, a grease plant at that, into a different underserved black community. This project had a lot of concerns from the original SP, including the most detrimental to Haynes Manor, which is flooding. The only reason that we're not seeking a deferral or standing complete opposition is because District 2 Councilwoman Tooms has been a fearless advocate for her constituents. She quickly moved to have our concerns addressed. To date, Nire, the developer and owner, have made some changes to the SP that reflect some of the community's concerns. To show good faith effort and continued spirit of collaboration, we will not ask a deferral tonight and instead request the Commission adds some conditions to the SP. Our councilwoman will make further modifications to the bill at Metro Council to meet our needs. Winnie Forrester with HTNC will discuss our requested conditions now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just hand it to the staff, ma'am. We'll hand it out. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Winnie Forrester. I live at 2611 Shreve Lane. So I'm a board member of the Haynes Trinity Neighborhood Association, and I'm vice president of the Haynes Heights Neighborhood of the Haynes Heights Neighborhood Association, Haynes Trinity Neighborhood Coalition, and vice president of the Haynes Heights Neighborhood Association. So, both of our neighborhoods are historic. We've got the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay designation. So, as Claudia mentioned, you know, this area has been problematic for us for decades because of the increasing number of industries being located here. You can understand our concern when a 600,000-square-foot warehouse was proposed for this farmland. So, we've been working hard with the council members and the Nyer developers to reach a consensus. While we would prefer not to have this huge warehouse, we are pragmatic, and so will not ask for a deferral tonight. We appreciate the conversations and the modifications to the SP that Nyer has made so far. We would like to point out that the original SP had a security barrier across the front, so there was no public access at all. So, you know, that's when good things happen, when you get together with the community and they move the security gate back to allow for additional uses. However, you know, and we need your input on this. What I passed out is some of the conditions that we would like to have revised, and there's always the possibility that we misunderstood something, but you could clarify that. And please ignore number three, since that's already been addressed. But condition one appears to inadvertently allow the front buildings, one and two, to ultimately be built out as originally planned as warehouses. So, Nyer expanded the allowed uses in the SP to include 12 additional uses, including retails and restaurants. However, these two front buildings that we hope are designated for retail and restaurants do not specifically eliminate the original light industrial and warehouse uses. So, we have been the victim of SPs that have been abandoned and then inherited by somebody else, and then they don't look anything like what we were told they would look like. So, that's why we're coming to you to specifically restate condition one to restrict the uses for building one and two to the new 12 non-residential allowed uses. I hope that made sense. The other one is that we're concerned about the staff report doesn't really reflect what the SP states. And the SP states that the maximum height is 70 feet, except for a smaller portion, 50,000 square feet, up to 95 feet. So, condition two of the staff report states the maximum building height shall be limited to 95 feet, the taller height than three stories. So, we're concerned that this could be misinterpreted and allow for all building heights to be 95 feet. And we'd like for the condition to specify that it's only allowed for the smaller 50,000 square foot, and in addition, that it's restricted to the back two buildings. This SP as originally proposed, it was up front, which makes no sense. And then lastly, and this probably could be addressed at the council level because it's a little late to be doing it now, but we did want the mass and the look of the buildings up front to be more like a town center. This is exactly what was presented in the very beginning with the mass in the warehouses. So, there's been no changes to the bulk of the project up front. So, we'd also like to see a green roof, pervious pavement in the retail parking lot, and thank you. Right on time.
Right on time. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? All right. Seeing none? Rebuttal. Two minutes.
Chairman, do I need to do the rebuttal now, or can we have Councilmember Gamble speak first? What's your preference?
Well, we usually do the rebuttal, and then we'll have the council members speak.
Okay. I'm John Cooper with the Holland and Knight Law Firm, 511 Union Street, representing Al Nyer, the developer. Al Nyer has the utmost respect for the Haynes Manor Neighborhood, as well as the Haynes Trinity Neighbor Coalition. They have been working with the neighbors for these past couple months to try and come up with a better product, which we believe that they have done. It was said that they were fighting to maintain the status quo. Well, we believe that we're enhancing the status quo, especially when it comes to flooding, and we'll be providing jobs and amenities in the area that don't exist today. In addition, there were concern about industries, large industries and grease plants. That is not at all what this is. This is a music, entertainment, production facility that will include live rehearsal space for people who are going on large stadium tours. I mean, this is a really cool product, so it's not just an industrial building or a large warehouse. And then, as to the conditions, we had not seen the conditions, but we are happy to work with Councilmember Gamble and the neighbors to see what can be incorporated by amendment when the bill gets to council. But we respect your, we request your support as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Council Lady Gamble. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all, and thank you to everyone who came out today to speak on this project. As has been stated, there has been quite a bit of community engagement for this project from District Three, which actually the property sits in District Three, as well as District Two, which abuts the property, so it's right on the borderline of District Three and Two. In the meetings that were held with District Three, right away, there were concerns regarding potential flooding that the development could cause, as well as the potential burial ground, archaeological burial ground on the property as well. From the very beginning, the developers have heard and listened from the community and made adjustments to the plan. For one thing, they are not building in the flood plain. They're adding additional stormwater mitigations that are required and going above that to make sure that they do not cause any further flooding harm, but actually improve flooding. And I think the staff report mentions that from Metro Water, as far as the mitigations that they will need to put in, how it will improve the flooding situation. This property sits across the street from a UPS distribution center and a rock quarry that have negatively impacted the community for many years. I believe that this particular project will enhance the character of the community. As has been stated, Soundcheck is a well-established business, have been on Cowan Street on the East Bank for 30 years. They were happy there, but they are having to move now. They're being displaced because of Oracle. And many of the users, including the owner, live in Whites Creek, and this provides an opportunity for those workers and users to continue to work in Davidson County, close to where they live. Also, the developers heard from the community about the need for landscaping, tree coverage. Currently, right now, there are really no trees on the property. So, these developers will be putting in 20% more than what's required to help with the flooding, as well as beautifying, beautification of the area. Additionally, they are putting in some of the conditions that came out of those community meetings, which I appreciate the feedback from the community from District Three as well as District Two. They are adding a one-aisle parking lot with permeable surface parking, dark-skylighting, exceeding the planting, landscape planting by 20%, adding a commercial mixed-use initially. Their current facility on Cowan Street is not open to the public. It's not a mixed-use project, but after hearing from the community about the need for that, the developer has changed and the owner has changed the plan to include mixed-use retail and commercial that will complement the mixed-use project that you all approved a couple of months ago on the north side of Riley Parkway. So, this property will, or this development, rather, will complement what has been approved on the north side of Riley Parkway. Also, they are adding sidewalk and gutter to Whites Creek Pike, dedicating Greenway easements to Metro. So, the fact of the matter is, this project will help enhance and improve the quality of life and area in Whites Creek, particularly on this Whites Creek Pike-Bryley Parkway corridor. For those reasons, I support the project, and I'm very open and support the idea of adding additional conditions. I understand that there was another meeting held in District Two two nights ago, and some things may have come out of that. I guess it's what you have today. I haven't seen it. But very open to adding additional conditions related to those concerns that we've discussed at previous meetings, and that can be done today or at the council level. Would work with my colleague, Councilmember Toomes, at the council level in making sure that we address and include any conditional concerns. We want this to be a project that benefits the Soundcheck, the music community, which is a highlight and a staple in our Nashville community, as well as our community of residents in the Whites Creek area, and I think that this project does that. So, for those reasons, I ask for your support in moving this forward today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady. And since it is so close to Councilwoman Toomes...
Yes.
I would love to call her. We would love to call her up here. Council Lady Toomes. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. I'll speak briefly. I just want to stand in support of my District Two constituents. I'll say that, as Claudia mentioned, the Haynes Manor subdivision has over 900 homes. And when this project was initially proposed, I had zero folks in my district that were in support of this project. However, as Claudia and Winnie said, my constituents are reasonable, and they were willing to come to the table with the Nyer group. And the Nyer group was willing to come to the table and to discuss how to make this project better. And there have been a lot of concessions, a lot of good changes that are moving this towards being a good project for the community. I will say that I do support the additional conditions that the District Two constituents are wanting because they live right next to this project. If those can't be added today, I am in full support of sponsoring an amendment to make sure that it's in the zoning ordinance at council. I don't have a problem with the project moving forward. There still is some more work to do to make it a good project for the area, and I'm willing to participate in that work as much as I can as the district council person, you know, particularly since this project will be a part of District Two come August 3, and hopefully, I'll be at the helm as the district council person still. I'm speaking that into existence. But I don't have an issue with moving the project forward. I just want to lift up my District Two constituents and let them know that I will be supporting them and making sure that they are satisfied with this project before it becomes finalized. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And so, Commissioners, last time, since we have a lot of items tonight, I think the last time, it worked really well, where we would start with one Commissioner, and then if there were other questions, you know, I'll call in and just let me know that you want to speak, and then we'll go in order of that, and then we'll keep trying that. It seemed to work good and kind of speed up the meeting last time. So, if that's, I hope that's okay with the Commissioners? Okay. So, Vice Chair, you want to start, lead us off on this case?
Thank you. No, no worries. So, this seems like a really exciting project, and it's good to hear that there's been a fair amount of movement in terms of the applicant meeting with the community, and, you know, the initial letter I read from Council Lady Toomes indicated that she didn't support it, but it sounds like through some active communication, things have, both sides have gotten a little bit closer, which is exciting. It does feel like we've seen a lot at this intersection in the last, like, four to six weeks, so clearly, this is an indication that there's a lot of change happening at this sort of gateway into the Whites Creek area. But this does seem to be consistent, you know, given it's on the, I don't know the directions, but it's on the other side of Riley Parkway, and it seems like it's consistent with, you know, what we intend to see in that area. I kind of wanted to talk through a couple of the conditions, which I also think may be questions. So, one of the conditions that the community representatives raised was to allow buildings one and two to be mixed-use and not warehouse. So, I think if I'm reading this right, that the site plan has been updated to reflect that. It looks like that is mixed-use, multi-tenant.
So, the change that was made to the SP was to open up the uses that would be allowed, such as allowing retail restaurant. A lot of the times with SPs, you will see sort of a list of possible uses. That doesn't mean that every use would be in there. It means that those are possible uses that could be permitted within any of the buildings. And so, I believe that the community would like the front two buildings restricted in use so that they could not be warehousing. Yes. And so, the change that has been made so far is to insert and allow more uses, which gives flexibility to the front two buildings. But those front two buildings have not been restricted to only those additional uses, if that makes sense.
But based on this, the intent is clearly that the back two are more restricted towards the warehousing versus the front two. I mean, there's a clear difference in the plan.
Right. Yes. By building, by site plan and building design, where you have loading areas, loading docks between the two buildings, those are clearly the buildings that are intended to have sort of the warehousing production uses that require the larger open spaces.
Okay. One thing I would just add, we always, in a land use space, want to open the door to encourage the kinds of uses that we think are reflective of the policy and what we hear from the community is desirable. There's a difference, as you know, between zoning and what the market might respond to. And so, there have been some previous cases where we will require retail-only, and if the market's not there, they'll come back and say, "We've waited a year, and we haven't been able to get that done." And so, the department has learned over time that it's sometimes better to open up the uses and stay in our lane and do what we can to try to urge the market to respond. But much as we'd like to be queens of the world, we can't force a market response. But I think that this plan in front of me gives me some comfort that there is a real intent to try to meet what is put forth as condition one. Can we also clarify the height maximum? And where the 90, is the 95-foot height maximum, that's not consistent across all buildings, or, right? That's only to the back two buildings?
So, only, so 50,000 square feet is permitted to be the maximum of 90. Everything else is limited to 70. I think you could clarify to say on that condition that says maximum height is three stories in 95. I think you could say a maximum of 50,000 square feet is allowed to be to that height, and everything else is limited to 70. I think that that is an appropriate clarification.
Okay. Well, then, I would like to suggest, when we get to the point of making a motion, we try to take that into account. In terms of the, you know, suggested condition four, I think you kind of addressed that already, like, that we can't, you know, I hope that the developer has heard what the interest is, and I hope that the respective council ladies will continue discussing that and talk about the possibility of making that area more consistent with the town center for... that area more consistent with the town center feel that we've approved in the area. You know, I think, given the proximity to a flood, flood plain, you know, the idea of pervious pavement makes a lot of sense. I don't think that's something that we've ever required, but I think that that's, you know, something that seems like it would make sense to consider. You know, a green roof would also be great. That feels a little harder to come by. But, you know, just to continue to, I would pay attention, ask that you pay attention to condition four to see how that can be incorporated as it goes forward.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Clifton.
Thank you. I had one, two things. One brief question. I believe the initial explanation by staff mentioned a minimal disturbance to the flood plain. I'd like to hear a little bit more about what that means.
So the vast majority, if you actually look on sort of the right-hand side, south of the screen, south of the drive area, you'll see sort of a little point that jumps up. And that's the flood plain area. That's the minimal part that's being disturbed. So it's that very small area that's actually being disturbed, but for stormwater. So it's not being, it won't be impervious surfaces. And so it's a very, very small amount. The vast majority of not only the flood plain, but the floodway and all associated buffers is not being disturbed.
All right. Thank you. Well, I think this has been an interesting discussion and a very hopeful one in many ways because it's kind of got the best of all possible worlds, a fairly carefully thought out initial plan with a good community citizen law, probably being able to be made better by some intensive thought by people who have lived with a lot in their area and it hasn't always been exactly what they expected to happen. So to me, this is a great example of openness on all sides.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. I think it was just for the clarifying question about the height of the 95 feet. It was said limited to 50,000 square foot. But it did not specify it was limited to buildings three and four. Is it implied or just, so would it be possible for the front building one or two to go as high as 95 feet?
The square footage is the only thing that has been limited to only 50,000 square feet has been limited, but it was not specific as to which buildings. But I think that you all could certainly consider that if you would like.
I would like to consider that because that's the request from the neighborhood. And having a higher building in the back makes sense than, you know, having taller building in your front and there's shorter building in back. So I would like to kind of further limit the height. 95 feet will be limited to three and four and up to 50,000 square foot. So that will tighten up the request from the neighborhood.
Well, we also may want to ask the applicant just to get their side of the story because, you know, I'm always, I want to be fair to everyone. And so I think, I think, is it, the question would be, are you guys okay with that? Are you, is that something that changes the plan or did you have the idea for the front buildings?
I can tell the idea is not to put it up front, but we are still working with our tenants. And unfortunately, it's hard to engage tenants in a property that's not zoned for their use. And so the 95-foot tall building is specifically intended for a studio rehearsal space. So a building that would be a clear story like your Bridgestone Arena is that they could set up a full staging practice and that. They, some of the tenant discussion has also desired it to be in the back. And so it's looking like we're moving that direction. But until we can really engage and get through some of these first steps, I'd like to see if we could add that. We're, continue working with our tenants and the council people and do that at the council stage, if that would be acceptable. We understand the intent not to, and I guess if we do want to move forward with a limitation, if it's not facing Riley, the building numbers are subjective, I guess. So if, are not abutting White's Creek Pike. I believe we're moving that way. It's just we don't have enough bond from the tenants without a rezoning to commit to that. We would hope to do that at council level, if that's possible.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Johnson?
I appreciate that. I think intent is there. So I think, you know, between working with our community and development team, I think I'm confident we will have a good solution.
Okay. Any other discussion? So Vice Chair.
May I just ask Logan or Lisa to just restate, because we have different building numbers, it's a maximum of 95, limited to 50,000 square feet. Lisa, is that what you restated or Logan's?
That's correct. So the maximum overall height allowed for up to 50,000 square feet is 95 feet. The remainder above that 50,000 square feet is limited to 70.
Recommend we just refer back to what Ms. Milligan restated.
For the record.
Yeah. I will write it in that way.
Thank you. All right. Vice Chair, do you want to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve, okay, so 19A. Yeah, we did not talk about that, but I definitely support removing the extension. So I will make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation for item 19A.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, approving 19A, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, ayes have it, 19A is approved.
Then I will make a motion that we approve item 19B with staff's recommendation and all conditions included, as well as adding in the condition that Ms. Milligan has stated for us regarding the maximum height for the 50,000 square foot.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, ayes have it, and 19B is adopted. All right. So you're on 21. And thank you, Council ladies. We appreciate you all coming. Thank you. All right. So 21A.
Chairman, I would, I had heard that at least some of the opposition may have left on this one. So you may just want to ask before every item, as is your normal practice.
Absolutely. Thank you for the reminder, Lisa. So is anyone in the audience here opposed to items 21A or 21B? Hold on, let's, hold on, let's see. Is there any opposition to 21A and B? Do you oppose it, sir? Come up here and say what you mean.
I'm not answering.
No, okay.
My name is Sean Doyle. I live at 6461 Holt Road, adjacent property owner to this item that's about to come up. I did initially request to defer. I did submit a request to defer on this. I know there were a number of other people in the community that did request deferrals on this. After speaking some with the attorney for the property owner and with Councilman Swope, I have decided to not request a deferral at this time.
Okay, well, then that's all you have to say.
But I did have a question that I don't know if you can answer. I did notice on the language, once it got put back on the agenda, that it was a conditional approve. Can I ask what those are?
Oh, the conditions? Yeah, we'll have the team talk to you real quick. Let's take just a minute. That way, you know, one minute is much. Sometimes we take a break to work things out. We're trying to see if this, if we can resolve this without having a hearing. So just thank you for being patient. All right. So is there any opposition on 21A and 21B? And seeing none, all right. Thank you, Councilmen. It's good to see you, though. Seeing no opposition, Commissioners, is there a motion to place this item back on the agenda, on the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, that's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of 20A being placed back on, excuse me, 21A and 21B being placed back on the consent agenda, say aye. Opposed, no, ayes have it, and those items are back on the consent agenda and approved. All right. So I think we can, Commissioners, I think we can do one more item before we take a break and that would be, that would put us a little bit over two hours, is usually what we do. So just so everybody knows, so now we are on to item 22. And Commissioners, this item, as you note in the report, that we'd held the public hearing on April 27th on this item and that the public hearing is closed. So we're going to hear an update on it, get the update, and then we'll go right into discussion unless we open it back up. Okay.
Hi, I'm Donald Anthony and this is item 22 on the agenda. And as the chairman just mentioned, this was on the April 27th agenda and was deferred. The request is to rezone a 2.5 acre property at the southeast corner of Knight Drive and Ewing Drive from RS 7.5 to RM 20A. Just going to jump right into the issues that came up during the public hearing and the discussion afterwards. The Planning Commission deferred that request pending additional information from the applicant regarding burial sites on the property. Specifically, the commission was concerned about the size of the burial area and how permitting 20 units per acre might affect a constrained site. So the applicant has provided us with an exhibit, which is on the screen, which shows that about 2,200 square feet of the site would be encumbered by the burial area. So that's actually a very small site. It represents only about 2% of the total overall site. Staff was also asked to look into whether a lower-density zoning district might be appropriate here. So we've provided you on the screen, you can see three different multifamily districts that do all comply with the T3NE policy area. RM 20A, which is what has been requested is the most dense and that could yield 50 units. The RM 15A, which would be the next thing down, would yield 38 units on the site. And then RM 9A would yield 22 units on this site. So with that, I will turn it back over to you and staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And so I remember this case and I remember, these are the questions that we asked. So Commissioner Haynes, were you here on this? You weren't on yet. Commissioner Tibbs, you want to go first? I'll start with you.
I was here before, but, and I do remember one of the key things was the cemetery. Could you just repeat, oh, is he still over there? Okay. So this area just shows the, what I'm looking at is the actual cemetery's area. That is, and is that, that's right off the street, too. Okay. And then the 20A was what was actually going down to the other part. That was actually what was actually proposed by the applicant? Is that correct to the, or is this, okay. And was there ever any other conversations with the applicant about any of these, changing these at all, or this is strictly just information that you provided?
This is just strictly information that we provided. The applicant initially, when the request first came in, it was for RM 15A, but the applicant, prior to coming to the Planning Commission last month, did ask that it be moved up to RM 20A.
Got you. I think those hit my questions from last time, Chairman.
Any other questions? Councilman?
Well, maybe not so much questions, but comments, but I appreciate the information about the cemetery location. It does look as though there are two burial sites that are presumably going to be relocated within that cemetery. I know we have a lot of interest in cemetery preservation throughout the county and Commissioner Tibbs and Commissioner Johnston maybe could speak to that a little bit more. It looks like there is a cemetery access easement through the front. So I guess one of the things that I really wish we had for the site is a little bit more of a site plan, I guess. I know this is a straight zoning, but I think for me, having a site plan would give me a little bit more comfort to have some idea of where building, the buildings would be distributed throughout the site. Like, is it going to maintain access? You know, I mean, probably we're not building up in front of the cemetery per se, right? But like, how would the building site address the cemetery site? I think that could be done really well. Could also maybe not be done really well. But, you know, when you come down this section of Ewing, and I've been traveling this way a lot and looking at a lot of our sites, but one of the things that I notice is that there are bus stops along Ewing. There is a bus stop across the street. And there's a lot more pedestrian activity than one would think. It's a pretty sparsely populated area in terms of building coverage. I think it's great to have density supporting our buses, so I want to put that out front. But at the same time, this will kind of stick out like a sore thumb a little bit compared to what's around it. I think that density is appropriate here as long as it is really done in a way that really does support that bus stop well. And I think that's another one of the things that I would maybe, if we had a site plan version, really speak to how this addresses and provides a safe crossing over to that bus stop. The bus stop is across the street. There actually is a guardrail that sort of goes around because it's in a little bit of a ditch. There's a guardrail that kind of precludes maybe getting to that bus stop. It's not a bus shelter per se. But I really do want to have density that supports our WGO system, but I have some concerns that in a straight zoning that does not include a site plan, that we're just, we may not have a lot of control over that unless there is, unless it's already planned that we go and end up would look at that or something to that effect. Those are just some of the things that I was thinking about. I do see a lot of pedestrians want to make sure we do support the bus route. And just the density, I think, is okay as long as it's really well placed and designed.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Clifton.
Thank you. I think I was the one who moved for deferral before and it wasn't because I had deeply felt support or opposition for this, but just there was a lot of lack of certainty about what we were doing. And I think, I think this has clarified it for me. I'm always amazed at how diligent you are in getting out to some of these places and looking at that. So that's very helpful. I actually feel comfortable leaving this in the hands of the council. They've heard the discussion. It doesn't seem to me to violate any major problems we would have in light of what we've heard today. So anyway, I'd be ready to vote for that today as an approval.
Thank you. And I can't remember, so I have a question of the council member. I don't know if we got, did we get a letter from Council Lady Tooms or are you in support of the project? I just want to make sure you're in support of the project. Thank you. Thank you, Council Lady.
I believe I spoke on this one last time in the, you know, beginning comment.
Yeah.
I did not give an opinion as to whether I-
Oh, maybe that's what I was saying.
Yes, and I am still at that same position, because there's still some concern from constituents who live nearby about traffic, and I know that's always a concern anytime there's new development. There's also concern about the density. The 50 units is news to me. I don't think that's what was, what was discussed at the community meeting, and so I would like to continue working on it. I don't have a problem if you feel like it fits the land use policy, but it definitely needs some more work, and we'll need some more community discussion before we get, well, before we get to third reading at council.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Appreciate it. Any other discussion, Council Lady? Commissioner Johnston?
Thank you, Chair.
You were a former Councilman.
Yes. I was not part of the discussion, I was away, but I did watch the YouTube, not only once, but I did watch twice, so, interesting. So the question, I do have a question about FAR. I think one of the staff reports says no maximum FAR for multifamily units. So could you interpret with, how does it interpret to height, if that's the case?
So there are standards for height in RM 20A. With the multifamily districts, the way that they work is that, in, I'm sorry, in the zoning code, we measure intensity a couple of different ways, either number of units per acre or FAR. FAR is used more generally with mixed-use districts and commercial districts, and density or units per acre is used for residential districts such as this. And so there is no FAR, but there are things such as maximum impervious surface, and so you have sort of a maximum amount of coverage of the lot with surfaces that are impervious. And then you also do have specific standards for height. RM 20A has a specific height at the setback, and then a height after a step back. I'm going to look it up in just a second. Unlike just straight RM 20, which has a height control plane, and so the A is going to mean that there is a maximum height, and I'm going to, unless, you know, it is out there. Okay, I'm going to look it up just a second.
I appreciate that. That was my concern, because as far as the location is concerned, higher density is appropriate, will meet, you know, policy, but my concern was that relation to FAR, because typical, the amateur point of view, FAR, and then such as a cemetery site, you cannot develop in that site, so therefore kind of back up, so it will increase the height. So that was my question. So I think it would be nice to have some kind of height for a control going towards existing neighborhood, because that's what, you know, existing neighborhood were concerned, because we don't want to have like a 60, 75 story right next to 35 existing single homes. So that was my concern. So it would be nice to have, if it's, you know, up to me, it would be nice to have a regulatory SP to specify height where the building envelope might be and setback might be. So that's where I am after watching, you know, your discussion.
I have the information.
Oh, we have the information.
I have the information. So the maximum, so RM 20A does height at the build two, and then there's a step back, and then you have the maximum height. Within the UZO, and this is outside of the UZO, the build two ranges from 0 to 80 feet. And so outside of the UZO, you can have a deeper setback than if you're in the UZO, where it's only 0 to 15. So the height that is permitted at the build two line is 30 feet, and then you can step back 15 and go up to 45. Under the zoning that it is now today, you're permitted to have a maximum of three stories, and because it's not within the UZO, there is not a foot that is assigned to that. And so you could have single-family lots with three-story homes, and so with the RM 20A, the height is, is a bit more limited. Just in case you're curious, the height for RM 15A is 30 feet, again, at the build two, 15 foot setback up to 35, and then RM 9A is the same. So the 15 and 9 have a bit more of a height restriction than 20. Does that, and I can repeat those if it's necessary, because I just spit on them.
That's great information. That will give me a little bit of comfort, because in relation to FAR, I was literally concerned with it go up to 75 feet. So that was my question. Thank you.
Nice work, planning staff. Any other discussion?
I think, that, so process-wise, I think I side with Councilman Withers that it would, I mean, one, the burial site makes this a uniquely constrained site, and to me, this is the kind of place where you would want to see an SP, because you want to see how you're going to make it work in relation, you know, to this constrained site. I agree that density makes sense here, you know, and so I support that, but if you do look at the surrounding area, it is still mostly single-family housing, and I'm not 100% sure that a straight rezoning gives me the comfort that this is going to necessarily fit the context of that area. It might, but, so I guess from a process perspective, if, these don't seem like amendments that can get made as you move through the council process.
Lisa, can you describe the conversion to an SP at third? I think they've got two options. I think option one is defer and say, we want a new SP application, and the other is to request that Councilmember Tooms consider a conversion, but I think based on this feedback, we would need to give some suggestions as to how that would happen before third or at third. Can you walk through that process?
Yes. So the council, let me talk first about the sort of, if it happens at council procedure. So the council process, and I'm pulling up the council rules, because I always want to make sure that I am speaking to them specifically. So the council rules indicate that a zoning bill can be converted to an SP prior to, at or prior to third reading, without being re-referred to the Planning Commission, so long as it is equally as restrictive as whatever you all have made a recommendation on. So in other words, if you all make a recommendation and say, recommend approval of RM 20A, which yields 50 units, and then it's converted at council to an SP that is for 40 units, and the height is more restrictive than what maybe RM 20A permits, and certain areas of the site are not, cannot have buildings, then all of those things are equally or more restrictive than the recommendation that you all made, and so it does not have to come back to you all. Your recommendation stands on the SP. Does that make sense? Okay. And I actually, hold on just a second, let me make sure.
The question is, what are the factors that you want reviewed, and if you feel like you could put them on the table and say, these are the factors we would want Councilwoman Tooms to consider, including converting, she could take that or not, you're just giving advice on that point, then you could move it forward. If you feel like the complexities of your comments are such that you're really not going to be assured in your view without actually seeing a plan, then that process may not be work, may not work. I've heard several commissioners say a regulatory SP would give you some satisfaction. That's not a site plan-based SP. That just means you're giving the criteria you would want. So I think we would need a better sense from the commission as to where you are on this one.
Well, I think, like, perhaps something could be contextually designed to yield 50 units, and I would feel okay about that, but 50 units feels like a lot, so, I mean, I guess it'd be, like, so I would be more inclined to support the RM 15A based on the height that you shared with us. That seems to be closer in context to the surrounding area. But for the applicant, you know, maybe there's a way to get closer to 50 units with, with the right design. So it'd be kind of, it's kind of hard to say which way to go. Like, I would be more inclined to support a more restrictive rezoning if we go that route, and possibly consider more units if it was an SP.
Well, and Vice Chair, I would say, too, to add to your comments, which were very good, that Council Lady Tooms has always come to the commission and has, has not led us astray in any way, shape, or form since she's been there. So I trust her very, very much, and I think that, you know, for the developer, you bring up good points to the developer, they might not be able to get 50 units, but if you do RM 15A, then you can't even get close to that, and so depending on the site. So I'm saying, I trust the council lady that she takes our intent, that, I think it's based on the site, and if you can get that many units on there, and I trust her judgment. That's what I'm saying. I guess that's what I'm saying. Any other discussion? So we'll need a motion, Vice Chair.
I, I don't know. I don't, I mean, I'm, I'd kind of like-
Maybe I can help.
Other, well, no, I mean, I'd like feedback from other commissioners. Like, my motion, if it was to me, like, I think I would support the rezoning, but only of RM 15A. That's what I think makes sense, and, and that to me would, but-
And that's probably not what the developer wants, but is there, maybe there's another person that's doing a motion?
I don't have a motion, but-
Okay, more discussion.
I was still a little bit more to where Councilman Withers were, like, well, and you said it, too, Vice Chair, that 50 might work, it's just, it's hard to see it, especially configured the way it is with the cemetery right there. So yeah, if, if we had to make a decision, I probably would go to 15A, but perhaps the, you know, given, I don't know if that's putting too much on Tooms, but giving her the SP where we could kind of more, you know, advise that. I'm not really the right word for that, but that would feel better for me to approve it at this point.
Okay, so maybe this might, so I sense hesitation. So I feel like maybe this director and I talk a little bit, and maybe this could, could work, is that we approve the plan. Well, you know, what we could do is ask the, I think we could ask the developer if they would be willing to go to RM 15A, is what we could do, ask that question, and that would be, he's shaking his head no. So potentially, what we could do here is to approve it with the suggestion of having an SP at the council level, with the intent that the council member works with the staff to make sure that the building placements and the density seems appropriate for the site. Because our, right now, we either have to disapprove or approve, and so it, but that's a suggestion that we could do, and I know that's clear as mud for the Vice Chair. But it'd be to approve it, the motion would be to approve it with the intent that the council member works on doing it, regulatory SP, and work with staff to, to look at the building placement and density, to make sure it's appropriate.
So the regulatory SP could lead to a reduction in units?
Yes.
If that was the appropriate. So, I mean, I do, I do fully trust the council lady's ability to lead this process through. We do always just want to make sure that we're not ending up in a situation where we have this rezoning and it gets old, and we end up with something that doesn't.
Well, I think, too, the, the, one of the reasons why we kind of need to move on is because we're hitting a timeframe issue, and that's one of the, so I would normally say, let's defer it, convert it here and do it, but we're running into a timeframe issue where the applicant can't get it passed. So that's the reason why I say we really, we really kind of need to move, move forward. We're in an awkward timeframe, so. Does anybody have any more thoughts, or make a motion, or?
Well, I thought Ms. Milligan might be getting information for us.
Okay, maybe. More discussion.
Let me confirm one thing on, because there is a bill that has been introduced.
The bill has been introduced?
Yeah.
Yes.
I just, I, I need to confirm one thing related to the timing of that.
What bill about smartly again? Just a minute.
Okay, so I wanted to confirm when the public, so this was on public hearing, it had to be deferred because you all had not heard it yet, and so the public hearing is now not tracking until July. I just spoke with the applicant, and they have agreed to defer for two meetings to the June 8th meeting, which they can do, because they're not public hearing until July, which will allow time for them to work with staff to submit a regulatory SP that can provide some additional information in regards to the location of the buildings, the height, the orientation around the cemetery. I have seen sort of a quick drawing, but we just need to actually look at it and make sure that we are getting sort of buffers in place and those sorts of things. I mean, so I think that that's probably-
That's even better, so, thank you, Ms. Milligan.
If that is appropriate.
Two-meeting deferral, so, Vice Chair?
Make that motion.
That was a motion to-
I will make a motion that we defer this item until the June 8th meeting.
Two-meeting deferral. That's proper motion. Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye? No, ayes have it. It's deferred to meetings, and we're going to go on a 10-minute break. On Saturday, oh, never mind, wrong, just kidding. Back. All right, so we are on item number 28, but I want to make sure, as we do, sometimes the opposition gets worked out. So on item number 28, which was on the consent agenda, is anyone in the room in opposition to item number 28? Okay, all right, we'll hear the, hear the case. Yep?
Okay, Eric McTravers presenting item 28 on the agenda. This is a request to rezone from one and two-family residential R10 to specific plan zoning for a property at the intersection of Old Hickory Boulevard and Bell Road to permit 112 multifamily residential units. The staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The subject site is a single parcel made up of 4.42 acres with frontage on Bell Road and Old Hickory Boulevard. Existing zoning is one-two-family residential R10. It would permit a maximum of 19 lots with four duplex lawouts for a total of 23 units. Bell Road and Old Hickory Boulevard are both arterial boulevards in the major and collector's street plan. The lone parcel to the north, adjacent parcel to the north, the zone residential pud, RM 15, is occupied by an apartment complex. The parcel to the east is zone RM 15 as well, and is also occupied by an apartment complex. And inland to the south across Bell Road is part of the Percy Priest Reservoir property and is undeveloped. The site is heavily wooded and slips downhill slightly from north to south. The policy is suburban neighborhood evolving, which is intended to create and enhance suburban residential neighborhoods with more housing choices, improved pedestrian-bike and vehicular connectivity, and moderate density development patterns. This is the site plan. The application proposes two apartment buildings that total 112 multifamily residential units. 90 are identified as one-bedroom, and 22 are identified as two-bedroom. The building heights are limited to three stories and 40 feet. The plan proposes to provide sidewalk connectivity internally and externally to Bell Road and Old Hickory. Vehicular access is limited to Bell Road with an emergency-only access on Old Hickory Boulevard at Endot's request. The primary access will align with the existing drive to Nashville Shores across Bell Road. the existing drive to Nashville Shores across Bell Road. And the plans include architectural standards demonstrating the units will have appropriate form and pattern for the policy and considering for consideration for the surrounding context. And the plans will screen parking from view along Bell Road using the existing vegetation and minimizing disturbance where feasible. So the application proposes a development pattern that's consistent with the policy guidance for T3 NE areas. Given the location and context, it encourages suburban residential pattern that introduces a diversity of housing types. And staff finds that the proposed plan is consistent with this. And the plan is also sensitive to the conservation policy across Bell Road at Percy Priest Reservoir and minimizes that disturbance along Bell Road. So for these reasons, staff finds the proposal consistent with policy overall and recommends approval.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. We'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Welcome. You have 10 minutes, two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Secretary, members of the commission and staff. I'm Roy Dale with Dale and Associates, and I'm representing the applicant on this proposal. This has gone through a pretty good vetting process with the community. This is in Councilmember Roten's district, but Evans is across the street. And so we had community meetings involving both council members. And as usual, when you have community meetings, there's a lot of good information that comes about that you just don't really see. And I think in talking to the gentleman that hears today, today, it's my understanding, it's maybe not in opposition, but probably has questions. So I believe he's with Nashville Shores, which probably since most of our meetings, our meetings were really residents, they're, you know, I don't know if he, if he just didn't know the meetings were occurring or not. I don't know. But during the, the process meeting with the community, we realized that there's an area here on Bell Road that's very narrow. And a lot of the people living in multifamily sites are walking to Nashville Shores. And so part of this plan was actually to widen Bell Road and put in a very wide sidewalk. When the traffic study was completed, I think NDOT actually identified this area as a area of concern for pedestrians. So actually, in the development of this property is providing an opportunity to do these upgrades to make it much, much safer. So it's a very good plan. It does have mostly one bedroom units here. We actually started out with four story buildings, but staff felt like that that was probably too much for the conservation policy across the street. So the plan was revised back to three stories. There was great efforts to preserve vegetation. And so it's a good plan. It's one that again was vetted through the community process. And one of the greatest benefits, I think, of the plan is again, the widening of the Bell Road and the addition of a sidewalk to provide safe access, not only from people within this development, but also those in the surrounding multifamily sites so they can get safely down Bell Road to Nashville Shores, which is a very appealing opportunity for people, especially in the summertime, to go walk. So I'll reserve two minutes in case it's needed. And I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll reserve the two minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing none? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, sir. Welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you all for everything you do. My name is Daniel Strobel. I work at Nashville Shores. And it's not really opposition. The plan looks great and those kind of things. The main concern is, which he addressed a little bit, is the traffic on that road. Bell Road has been, it's a two lane road all the way going over to the dam to Stewart's Ferry, right near Wilson County. So there've been a lot of tremendous growth in that area. And it's a, you know, ma- major artery. The plan I saw, like up here, I can't tell that the road is being widened or anything like that. And that is our biggest concern is that there's enough road infrastructure and and widening the road itself to help or whatever this new influx of, there will be some new influx of traffic from the apartment or the condos across the street. So nothing against the plan. More people to come see us at our water park and all that stuff, which is fine. But just really concerned about that road right there. It is a dangerous area as well. There's a lot of accidents on that road too. So.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Two minutes, everybody. You're okay, Neil? All right. Councilmember's not here. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Blackshear, do you want to lead us off?
Yeah, well, it sounds like the opponent's questions may have been answered regarding traffic. Obviously, we see the traffic conditions in the staff recommendation. So I would be willing to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation of approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Let's see if there's any other discussion and then we'll go there. Any other discussion? Seeing none? You can make a motion now. Sorry. I know.
I'll do it one more time. I move to approve staff's recommendation of approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Those no, ayes have it. And it's adopted. We appreciate you coming down, sir. All right. So that leads us to item number 37. Logan, back up.
Yes, Chair, I am. One second, please. Okay, item 37 on tonight's agenda is the Lipscomb University Institutional Overlay. The request is to amend the master development plan, which is a rezoning process. And staff recommends approval. The subject site includes multiple parcels and is about 116 acres. Lipscomb University either owns or intends to own all the property that's within the institutional overlay district. And a feature of the institutional overlay district is that the underlying zoning of the properties do not apply unless Lipscomb University owns and develops them as a component of the institution's campus. A component of this application is proposing to apply the institutional overlay to the commercially zoned property east of Granny White Pike, as well as to the Parkwood Terrace parcel west of Belmont Boulevard and some abutting parcels to this to comprise the complete end of the block between Green Hills and Shackelford Road. There are several policies applied to the site, primarily district major institutional is applied, which intends to reflect major institutions such as the university here. Suburban Neighborhood Center, which is a very rare policy in Nashville, is applied to the commercially zoned property on the east side of Granny White Pike and intends to serve neighbor, suburban neighborhoods with services generally within a five minute drive. The property west of Belmont Boulevard is within the suburban neighborhood maintenance policy, which intends to maintain the general character of suburban neighborhoods. And the conservation policy near Leland represents flood plain and floodway areas. So as a reminder, because we don't see many institutional overlays, the Planning Commission's recommendation on a institutional overlay and the associated master development plan should be based on findings that the master plan is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and that the essential infrastructure is adequate to support the proposed pattern and intensity of development. And that a recommendation of approval, the master plan shall further require a finding by the Planning Commission that the master plan arranges the campus related land uses in a manner that preserves the integrity and long term viability of nearby residential areas and provides methods for implementing the master plan in a way that minimizes disruption and inconvenience to the other landowners within the overlay district and surrounding community in general. So here on the screen is the current master plan with the parking garage that was recently constructed shaded in blue or purple. And then looking at the proposed master plan update, the changes to the plan are shaded in purple again. Many of the changes are occurring interior to the existing campus, and I won't focus on those. Those would be guided by the existing bulk standards that are within the institutional overlay that are not changing with this amendment. So the biggest exterior facing changes to the plan concerns Grand View Drive, which is at the top of the screen or the north side of the the site here. The plan proposes to modify the potential to build a academic building at the corner of Grand View and Belmont Boulevard. Additionally, the plan proposes to extend the existing parking structure with another one that would be the same size as the existing. Additionally, applicants provided, or they bolstered the screening standard that exists for Grand View. There's currently a large setback required with landscaping required there, and the applicant has committed to bolstering that standard there. Other exterior facing changes include on the southeast corner on Granny White Pike, next to the taller dormitory building that currently exists, an addition is proposed for a parking structure there. Also, the Student Center, the Bennett Student Center is proposing to replace their existing facade that fronts towards Granny White Pike. And concerning the newly included parcels, the commercially zoned area, and then the parcels west of Belmont Boulevard, those are shown to remain in their current conditions with the existing land uses and structures shown to remain. So any changes to those sites in the future would require additional rezoning processes to explore additional land uses or to look at modifying the site plan there. So the institutional overlay is proposing to maintain those as they currently are situated. The zoning code describes with institutional overlays that when you expand the boundary of them, there's three criteria that should be considered. The first is that the property is contiguous with the existing campus as of the date of the application. The second is that it's in accordance with an approved phasing plan. And third is that it's in a manner that does not further fragment the pattern of residential parcels from the residential area outside of the campus. And the zoning code gives figures to try to demonstrate what appropriate and inappropriate application would look like. So here on the screen is an example of what an appropriate application would look like. It's contiguous with the campus and it's not fragmenting the neighborhood. Here is an inappropriate application showing property being included in an overlay boundary where it could potentially be considered contiguous, but I think this one's showing fragmentation. And this is another example of an inappropriate application showing again a contiguous property, but one that is kind of extending into a neighborhood and fragmenting it from the other residential properties. So in staff's review of the parcels that are being added or the boundary that's being expanded, the properties east of Granny White Pike, I think, are a pretty obvious appropriate application as they're fully surrounded otherwise by the institutional overlay currently. And the plan shows them to remain in their current conditions. The property west of Belmont Boulevard comprises the entire eastern end of this block face and is immediately across from the existing institutional overlay. So in staff's review, we found this to be contiguous and in a way that would not further fragment the neighborhood with all of this property having frontage onto a street that is immediately across from the existing campus. So in staff's review, we find that the institutional overlay meets the criteria in the zoning code and recommends approval. That completes my presentation.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant in the room? Welcome. Please state your name and address, although we kind of know where it's at.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Brent Colberson, One University Park Drive, Nashville, Tennessee, 37204. Brent Colberson with Lipscomb University. I have Chuck Miller, Chuck Miller with anecdote formerly with Tuck Kenton. The item before you today proposes really to do the following as outlined by staff, to modify proposed buildings and their intended use in the master plan, incorporate the retail strip at the 4000 block of Granny White Pike, which the institution now owns, and expand the boundary of the institutional overlay to include property the university owns between Green Hills Drive and Shackelford Road along Belmont, which are contiguous to the existing campus and does not further fragment the residential used parcels. We have been before this body when the institutional overlay was originally adopted in 2003 and with amendments in 2006, 2013, 2018, and now 2023. We initiated this update last summer. We worked with our leadership, our Board of Trustees, met with the councilmen, met with planning staff, held a community meeting on March 30, and have met individually with members of the community and made ourselves available either in person, by phone, or via Zoom to hear their questions and answer any of their concerns. I'll now turn it over to Chuck Miller with anecdote, who has been a part of this project for 29 and a half years and has seen it from really the beginning to where we are now.
All right. Thank you, Brent. I'm Chuck Miller, 508 Houston Street, Nashville, Tennessee. I'm just going to cover some of the highlights of what Logan's mentioned, what Brent's mentioned. The two immediate changes to the plan are adding the CN Zone. It's the retail that's right off Granny White, as has been mentioned, and then the adding the Parkwood Terrace Apartments property, which Lipscomb's owned this property for 30 years. It's multi-family. It's currently multifamily in an R10 zone, so it's a non-conforming use in an R10 zone. Their intent is to continue to use it as apartments and just convert that property into the institutional overlay. So those are the two zone changes to the plan. As Logan mentioned, some of the highlights in the plan is the academic building at the corner of Belmont and Grand View that has been further defined, better defined, and kind of completes the corner there. The parking structure that he mentioned was actually shown in the previous plans. It was rotated 90 degrees. So we basically just rotated it to connect it to that garage with the intent that there might be a potential of apartments above that at some point. The other big change is we've looked at improving the amount of green space on campus by moving more of the surface parking into structured parking, trying to preserve the green space off Granny White that really kind of is next to where David Lipscomb's house is, preserving that as green. So that'll front Granny White in a little better manner, removing a lot of the surface parking through there and providing in addition to Bennett Student Center that actually removes Sewell Hall, which is a dormitory that's turned on an angle. So there, there will only be one dormitory that's existing to the campus that's actually rotated off the grid. Everything else is being returned to a natural grid. And finally, the other point that Logan made was the parking behind high rise dormitory. There's a natural grade there. So the, the decks could actually be just flat and the, similar to the Allen Arena Garage, there's no ramp inside of that. The roadway beside it is actually serves as the ramp. So with that, turn it back over.
And we'll request our two minutes for rebuttal, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. We'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Oh, sorry. Anyone in support? All right. Seeing no one? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. If y'all will line up in the middle, that would help us. And everyone's got two minutes and please state your name and address. We appreciate you coming down.
Actually, could I request the five minutes for the Neighborhood Association?
Well, so the question is, did you, she did. So yes, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Elaine Bright, 1000 and 1001 Grand View Drive. And I've been a member of the Avalon Neighborhood Association for about 30 years. And basically, I'd like to say that good fences make good neighbors. And I'm happy to say that in general, we are very happy with David Lipscomb as a neighbor and with the present master plan making good fences. Avalon, for the past 25 years, has been discussing plans and instrumental and working agreements with Lipscomb neighbors like me and have been in the area for long term. The board was created as a liaison to preview plans like this and advised David Lipscomb if they might be any neighbor opposition. And as you noticed, they did not mention that they made any attempt to communicate with the Neighborhood Association. I'm the lead on Next Door and was not notified to tell our neighbors through our communications through Next Door. That's our arm. That's our arm of communication. I just got that out Tuesday because I just found out about it. Tuesday, I don't drive down Lipscomb or Belmont to see the signs. And I'm a block away from the overlay and was not notified that there was a public meeting. And it happened that the public meeting was within a few days of the Coventry shooting, and that's why our councilman cannot make that meeting also. So I would say that our neighbors were distracted and had forgotten about the meeting and did not know about the meeting to attend. Let's see. Sorry about that. But so basically to say that the Neighborhood Association has not been involved in discussion on these changes. We request to defer a month or not approve part crossing the Belmont Avenue Boulevard due to a little notice to neighbors of the overlay and no notice to the association. From a few members that in our association that did attend the meeting, they were indicating that there was a lot of confusion and they asked some hard questions and didn't get answers. And we would, again, like to defer due to that to get some more input from the neighborhood. They mentioned that they've had several amendments. In Park Terrace has been a part of those requested amendments, and the Neighborhood Association were adamant about that not occurring because the original master plan, it was discussed they would not go across Belmont. We were understanding that, yes, you will be eventually going north and going east to Leland and north to Grand View and beyond, on up to possibly Woodmont. So as long as the communication plans are communicated and reviewed and addressed, addressing noise, stormwater, and traffic issues, we do not have an issue with the commercial strip. We think that might be an improvement. And we understand that, you know, they're making alterations to the plan within the footprint and no problems with that. But it's the crossing of Belmont that we have a definite issue with. And thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next?
I'm Tom Bauer. I live at 1608 South Observatory Drive in Nashville, right across the street, right across Belmont, from a street right across Belmont, from Lipscomb University. We too are very much proponents of the university and its positive impact on the city, but we are opposed to the institutional overlay crossing Belmont. Lipscomb's commitment to the neighborhood in when they negotiated the original master plan in 2002 was that they did not intend to cross Belmont Boulevard. Then in 2013, this area was removed from the proposed institutional overlay because there was no designated need for these properties to be included and because the neighborhood reminded the Planning Commission and the university of their commitment. We believe the same is true today. Crossing Belmont Boulevard, Belmont Boulevard is a natural barrier. When we talked about the master plan, they were going to expand north and west when we negotiated the master plan in 2002. That was the agreement. We believe when they cross Belmont, it just encourages and opens the door for this administration or future administrations to expand on into the neighborhood. And as an architect and as someone who works with a lot of universities, universities need land, and that would be exactly the path because that's what they need. They all need land in expansions, whether it's today in this administration and future administrations. What we're trying to do is preserve the neighborhood that surrounds Lipscomb. The existing zoning is very much more limited at R-10 when you do institutional overlay zoning. They can do education space, administrative space, housing, playing fields, parking garages, all subject, we understand, all subject to approval, but we believe it's a lot easier to prove that, to approve that once the institutional overlay is granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, give that to the team and...
Hello. Good evening, everybody. My name is Michelle Vanderpoel. I thank you all for your service. My main concern is I am the face of one of the people that had not received notice, even though Mr. Olivia Elliott did verify that it was sent out by mail and certified, but I did not receive it in any way. So my concern is I would like to have a deferral for the main reason for the lack of communication in our area. I didn't even know about the other people that just spoke. And I'm sure I'll have a conversation with them later. The plan of the university truly needs to be understood in the conversation section of the plan. Sorry, I'm not a public speaker, but I appreciate that you guys are. It's mainly to do with safety. The safety of the area, as you can see, it looks like a puzzle up there, a piece to the puzzle, and everything else around it is really ignored. And I'm one of the people in that area. There is Browns Creek that runs through there, and if anybody knows, I'm going to keep my coffee going here. Anybody knows the Browns Creek event from 2010 with a 10-foot flood that came through? None of this is addressed. And the Lipscomb University's plan that was originally two buildings went into one and to be parental parking lot disappeared. So it has affected our area. We really need open conversation, and that's what we're missing, and that's why I'm requesting a deferral for your decisions, and I appreciate that. In the second one, as you'll notice, it goes from 1,000 feet down to 550 in the photography plane. Nothing was submitted in their plans. It really is a lay of the land, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. You did great. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, rebuttal? Two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. Just a couple of comments regarding communication. We originally sent out notice on our own dime, not the ones that are required by the Planning Commission. So we sent out 1,250 feet from our address. I know usually it's typically 1,000. We sent the two notices, the Yellow Canary postcard and then the notice for this meeting as instructed by planning members. We've also posted that notice on Next Door, and as members of the community called, we were mindful of returning those calls. And if folks did follow up, that was great. If they didn't, that was out of our control. As mentioned earlier, Chuck has worked on this project for nearly 30 years, attended all community meetings, all planning meetings. We have no official record or statement where the university said that they would not cross Belmont. Additionally, the university has sold or is in the process of selling or has not exercised purchase options on over 15 properties. Seven of those are on Belmont, so I think that shows that we are not interested in making a major move to the west. We have a desire to recognize the two areas, in the retail and the Parkwood Terrace, as part of our campus, and both will retain their current usage. As Chuck mentioned, this will take a non-conforming usage in an R-10 zone and convert it to a conforming usage. We would respectfully request your approval and passage of this amendment before you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And the council member already spoke, so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And Commissioner Haynes, you want to go first?
I've been here long enough that I remember the 2013 meeting. And maybe it was not stated publicly, but there was a lot of consternation regarding going west and crossing Belmont Boulevard. So I tend to agree with the opponents here. Either we need a deferral because of all that went on with covenant and the communication, or we need to carve out this small piece west of Belmont Boulevard and only approve the retail on the east.
All right. And may I ask, since the deferral came up, what would be the timeframe that they could? How many times can we defer?
There is no filed council legislation.
Okay. So we have some time.
Yeah, there's not any council legislation pending for...
Okay.
But Chairman, forgive me for jumping in, but the request for 90 days, there is a point at which we would bump them past this current council schedule. So is that the meeting in July? Just if you wouldn't mind confirming that.
Yeah, that would be...
Is there 80 days in a normal cycle and then, or 90 days in a ending council?
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest a 90-day deferral. I think that's probably too long.
Okay.
But having a two-meeting deferral probably makes sense.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yeah, best chair, of course. We're still on discussion.
I think for Logan, did they have a community meeting? Has there been a community meeting?
Yeah, they did have a community meeting, and I attended it. So yes, they did.
Okay. Were there many neighbors in attendance?
There were probably 30 people there at the meeting, and the expansion of the boundary, I think, was the number one thing that people were interested in talking about.
And was that positive or neutral?
I think there's generally a concern about Lipscomb expanding into the neighborhood, and we talked about these specific proposals to expand the boundary.
Any other disco? Well, did we get a, wait one second, Commissioner, did we get an answer on the timeframe?
Sure. So any items that are heard on the next meeting, May 25th or June 8th, if they receive a positive recommendation, would then have legislation filed at the end of June for introduction in July with a public hearing in August. So that is sort of the last of the normal timeframe of planning commission meetings. There are always opportunities for council members to request bills early, and then we get into like a lot of complication. So to follow the normal track, June 8th would be the last opportunity to stay within this council term.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Commissioner Clifton?
Well, this is the, I know I've been on the commission often on for a while, but I don't quite remember this last one. I do have a little bit of experience with other campuses in Vanderbilt to Belmont in my former council district, which was much different level of angst than this, I have to say. But what I don't quite understand is about the opposition or the reticence to go forward at this point is, I mean, it's not, this is owned by the university. They're not using this process to change how they use it. They had the right to buy it. They're stabilizing it from what I can tell and not changing the uses through this action. Am I missing something?
Logan, can you clarify the significance of having a property that's already owned becoming in an institutional overlay versus being owned and not in the institutional overlay?
Yeah, and we talked about this at the community meeting, and I think this kind of concluded the conversation about the boundary discussion that we were having at the meeting. But by them opting into the institutional overlay with these properties, they're requesting to include them in the overlay, they're restricting themselves to basically what's shown on the master plan here and committing to maintaining that. So any changes to that would require an institutional overlay amendment. So they are optionally, or they're requesting to restrict themselves to only maintain what's there essentially.
This in effect limits their options. They're self-limiting because they want to put it in their plan.
Commissioner, I think Logan answered your first question. I think the second is, do you think this would precipitate or serve as a precedent across Belmont that's not shown here? That might be the other question that you're thinking about based on the testimony.
Well, they're not planning on changing the use across Belmont and couldn't really without further zoning action.
That's right.
Well, I'm just puzzled about the whole thing. I don't really see the way it's been discussed that there's a reason, though. In light of this, I don't think there's a reason not to defer it, frankly. I think probably that might be best for everyone because I cannot, I mean, I've had a lot of dealings with institutional neighbors, neighborhoods, and I cannot imagine a better neighborhood in Lipscomb, frankly, not to put down my own arm or Belmont. But that's just what it's always looked to be. That's just, I'm not going to stand in the way of the deferral, and I'm sorry that people didn't get that notice. It was a terrible time in the whole community and particularly that area of the community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Commissioner Johnson and then Councilman.
Thank you. I think I have a same question as Commissioner Clifton, but in a different way. So with this overlay expansion, Lipscomb University is committed not to change existing structure or usage. So unless they submit amendment to that. So as of right now, they are not submitting any amendment, the property west of the Belmont. So having said that, so under the, if we are to accept expansion in that expansion area, if Lipscomb University were to make amendment in the future, what kind of structure would be allowed under R-10 zoning?
So under the R-10 zoning, if there wasn't the institutional overlay, they could subdivide it to build one and two-family housing there with 10,000 square foot lots. But with the institutional overlay, they would be able to propose any type of use, you know, theoretically that are identified in the institutional overlays. But planning would review the criteria of the institutional overlay and would look at things like we showed on the previous slide. Here, we would look at these criteria. So we would look for the future development to not like fragment the neighborhood and for the impacts of like the proposed land use to be appropriate for that situation. So I think that that would be something that planning would look for at a future point when they had a plan for that property, and it would go through a public process that would have the plans available for review for the community.
Said that, so with that, I do understand Commissioner Clifton's concern. As of right now, the usage will not change. However, by expanding in the future, it could be 10 years, 20 years, 30 years from now, but when it happens, academic building might be able to be able to build in that section. So I think so neighborhood and we do need to understand the consequences of what expansion across from the Boulevard means. So for that, I would support the deferral. So any of the neighborhood and university can have more better understanding and what will be the future plan could be.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I guess I have a question. Just to be clear, and Logan, I guess this is, and Council will get right back to you. This is to deal with what the Commissioner said. But right now, under this proposal, it doesn't change the current use. I'm kind of like with Commissioner Clifton, it doesn't change the current use. If they propose an academic building, they would have to come through the... the same exact process to do an amendment. They would have to come to the planning commission again.
Right.
And they'd have to go to the Councilman.
The institutional overlay identifies the permitted land uses. So right now, they're showing the multifamily land use to remain. An academic land use would be a different land use. So they would have to go through a rezoning process. They would have to come back to the planning commission, go back through council as a rezoning process. So any type of land use change would need to come back before this body.
To its status quo.
Would that include redeveloping it with student housing?
If they were to redevelop the site with a new site plan, they would need a final site plan application. If they were increasing the density, then I think that would likely trigger a rezoning process as well.
Okay.
Councilman?
Thank you, Chair. I mean, just based on all this discussion, I do empathize with neighbors. Certainly, everything surrounding the Covenant School incident was a very stressful time, and appropriately, people focused on community and family during that time. So I think that's appropriate. However, I haven't heard any information that's been given that suggests to me that we should not recommend approval of this. We definitely do need housing, and in particular, we need student housing sometimes, too. I know TSU and some other institutions are really struggling with student housing. So I think that this is an appropriate land use, and the institutional overlay helps to at least resolve a legally non-conforming use. And we've established that if the university were to come back later for a different type of use that maybe might be a little bit more concerning to the neighborhood in terms of traffic or things like that, that it would go through a whole other complete process. So I would not be in support of a deferral at this time. I think that if we had information that really suggested that we might reach a different conclusion, then maybe a deferral. Or if we had a specific question, that might be appropriate. But I haven't heard that as yet. And I'll ask Ms. Milligan to nod at me if I'm right or not. But with this schedule, the council public hearing would not be till July because we do not have one in June, I'm imagining.
Yes, if approved, if there was a positive recommendation tonight, then any legislation would be filed at the end of May for introduction at the first meeting in June, public hearing in July. And so beyond tonight, then it's the schedule that I had talked about previously with introduction in July, public hearing in August.
Yeah. But, well, thanks for coming back. And like I said, I mean, certainly neighbors know about it now. It sounds like there were, there was a community meeting that did have a lot of attendance. We have had at least one, maybe two notice mailings. There are signs on the campus as of this morning. And so I know that sometimes folks get busy with other things and don't always see it. But like I said, I just haven't heard anything today that suggests that we're going to come up with a different recommendation. There was the issue of flooding, which we often hear a lot. But it appears that Browns Creek is much to the east, and this expansion to the west is unlikely to affect that particular concern. But certainly, it could be looked at with others. So I would be opposed to the deferral and in favor of a recommendation of approval. And certainly, Councilmember Polley can work with the university to schedule additional community meetings between now and a council public hearing in July.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion, maybe a motion, Councilman?
I would like to move approval with whatever conditions we have, yeah.
Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Pose? Eyes have it. Passes. All right. We are on, let me see. There was no noes. Let's do a hand real quick. All in favor, raise your hand. Yeah, it was unanimous. Okay. Unanimous, like I had thought. I wanted to be fair to all the commissioners because I'm a fair person. Okay. All right, we got, we're on item... 45, which is a disapproval, so we'll have to hear this item.
Eric's back. Back. Okay, Richard Havers presenting item 45 on the agenda. This is a request to rezone from single-family residential RS-10 to one and two-family residential R-10 for zoning, for property located at 2724 Enos Road, just east of Live Oak Road. It has a staff recommendation to disapprove. The site is 0.89 acres, currently occupied by single-family house, and land to the south, north, east, and west are all zoned RS-10, occupied by single-family houses. The policies on the site are suburban neighborhood maintenance and conservation. Suburban neighborhood maintenance is intended to maintain the general character, develops suburban residential neighborhoods. A small portion of conservation policy to the southwest of the site is part of a mature tree canopy. This neighborhood features a consistent pattern of single-family zoning and has been developed with single-family homes. A proposed zoning would potentially allow for two, for a two-family dwelling on the site if the existing single-family house were demolished. The applicant has indicated that they're seeking to make an existing detached structure behind the primary house eligible for detached accessory dwelling unit use, which is not currently allowed under the existing zoning. Staff is not supportive of rezoning at this location, given the consistent development pattern. Therefore, staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? The applicant is not in the room. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Support. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Welcome.
I want to thank you for your time, Commissioners, and...
If you can just pull the mic down. There we, yeah, so we hear you. There we go.
Thank you. Really, I appreciate you all, you all's hard work. And I'm Deborah Tabor. I'm property owner at 2816 Enos. And I'm representing some neighbors who already spoke to Eric. We appreciate Eric. Just reaffirming the staff's recommendation to disapprove this request to rezone the property at 2724 from single to multi-residential. We just feel like it could set a precedent for more multi-residential. Enos is a small 1950s street, sand sidewalk, but families stroll their babies, walk their dogs, jog, bicycle, and there's already enough traffic. More congestion wouldn't be beneficial. Thank you, and y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, no rebuttal, no council member here. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. It seems like it doesn't meet the policy. Vice Chair, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommendation of a disapproval.
That's a proper motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, eyes have it, and it's disapproved. All right, so we are on to... 48. This is another disapproval that we'll have to hear.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Selena Klonigstein, and I'm a staff planner. And I'll be presenting item 48 this evening. The request is to rezone from zoning district R-6 to CS on property located at 5100 and 55108 Tennessee Avenue. Staff recommends disapproval. The application would rezone the entirety of 5108B and a portion of 5100, a total of 0.35 acres. And so on the left is 5108, and on the right is going to be a portion of that property of 5100. Sorry. The portion of 5100 Tennessee Avenue that is zoned CS and located at the corner has an office building, while 5108B Tennessee Avenue is vacant. Surrounding properties are zoned R-6, R-7, R-7, 3.75, and specific plan residential. And then surrounding land uses are primarily residential, commercial, industrial, and vacant. The subject site is in T4 urban neighborhood maintenance, which is intended to maintain the general character of an existing urban and residential neighborhood. T4 NM areas will experience some change over time, primarily when buildings are expanded or replaced. When this occurs, efforts should be made to retain the existing character of the neighborhood. So the parcel is located to, or to the east of the area, sorry. Okay, the rectangle, the red rectangle, is the parcel at hand, or the site at hand. And then to the east is the T4 urban mixed-use corridor, and to the west is going to be T4 NM. The present commercial uses in the area dictated the initial boundaries of the T4 CM policy, as noted by the split of commercial or non-residential uses and almost exclusively residential uses within the same block. The proposed rezoning of this site to CS is not supported as the policy does not support non-residential uses within a neighborhood maintenance area. While a T4 NM policy supports R, RS, and RM zoning districts at varying intensities based on the surrounding context, the policy does not support non-residential zoning districts. The request to rezone to CS does not align with the T4 NM policy, and therefore, staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you. And we heard that this was your first presentation, Selena. Good job. I try not to embarrass the first time too much. Good job. All right, we'll open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant in the room? You have 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 for rebuttal.
Thank you. My name is Philip Piercy. I live at 213 Olive Branch Road, Nashville, Tennessee, 37205. But this property is our office. And interestingly enough, this is her first presentation. This is my first presentation before you as an owner. I've been submitting to y'all for 35 years, representing other people. But today, I'm representing myself and my partners who purchased this property in 2018 as our office. We made a pretty good investment in there. And as she mentioned, the first part is zoned CS. The other property we bought is vacant, but zoned R-6. Looking back, it's been vacant for over 30 years. Hasn't been used for residential in that time. We have contacted, and again, and above notices, all the notices that are required by Metro. We contacted our immediate neighbors. And so the property owner across the alley to the north that's owned all CS, he provided letter of support. The property owners to the south provided a letter of support, which he owns the corner and also the first residential lot. And the property owner immediately to our west, which I think would be the most impacted, he provided a letter of support. The two neighbors that are opposite the property on Tennessee, the first one provided a letter of not, of no opposition. He only expressed concern with drainage and landscaping. And the next property owner I've spoken to several times, she never provided a position, but she only was concerned when I talked to her about drainage. I would point out that if this site was developed with four houses, those would be less scrutinized for drainage and landscaping, which was what those two individuals were interested in, than a commercial property that would go through a complete review with apartments. I'd also note that when you, I know the staff, oh, we may have submitted with the Planning and Zoning Committee of the Nations. They don't provide a supporting role, but they would provide either a position of opposing or not opposing. And they took the not opposing position. And then our council member has also provided a little letter. And I think I've sent all those to the staff this morning, so y'all have a record of that. If you were to look at the current CS zonings, the property north of us across the alley runs from 51st all the way to 52nd. The property south of us across Tennessee, its CS goes a little bit farther to the west than us. And if you kind of diagonally across that, all of our property, except for maybe a fragment of a corner, would be on that CS side. So we really don't feel that we're really moving the CS into the neighborhood. From all of our indications of people we've talked to and understand, we have no opposition from the community. We certainly understand the staff's position, and we kind of feel like their hands are tied somewhat because of the policy. I would note that who in their original comments to us was that they were still looking at it. And it's, it was, our comments said we're likely not consistent with the policy, but they're still in review. And then they later came back with, you know, we have to stand with the policy. And we kind of feel like that's, you know, it's not just a solid, you can't do this, it's, this is the policy, and we must stand with it. We were hoping that y'all, hands are not tied, and y'all would look at the position that there's no opposition. We're not developers looking to see what we can do the most with this. We are the owners. We want to maintain our business in this location. But I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have, or if there's some opposition, I'll stand. Have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. We'll save two minutes for rebuttal, and we'll go through our normal process. So we appreciate you coming down. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Rebuttal. You waived the rebuttal. Thank you for waiving that. No council member, seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Johnson, you want to try to lead us off here?
Staff, could you please show me the slide where it shows the community policy? Yeah, that's the one. So this one, I do understand why staff is recommending this approval because it is a T4 neighborhood maintenance policy. But applicant is absolutely right. The property behind it is CS zoning and T4 CM policy. So my question to the staff is, we as a commissioner, if we were to expand the area of the T4 CM policy to include that property, is this within our authority?
Sure, if you, you all have the ability to direct staff to, you could recommend approval and direct staff to do a housekeeping amendment to modify the policy in that location. And that is something that we actually talked about with the policy team to say like, if this, would it be out of sort of the realm of something that would be supportable from a policy perspective to actually expand it in that location? And the policy team felt like, given the existing pattern of development and the surrounding zoning, that it would not, it would not give them pause to actually expand the policy in that way through a housekeeping amendment.
So with that analysis, I would support to approve a zone change and direct staff to expand the area of the CM, you know, policy modification.
Councilman?
Yes, oh, everything that I was going to say. I was going to say the same thing. I know that the Nation's Neighborhood has been working for many, many years since, I mean, certainly well before I was in council to try to kind of create a little bit of a business district there along 51st. In particular, they've been trying to get it to gel, moving it kind of away from industrial and more towards retail and office and things like that. And I think that having a letter of support from Councilmember Roberts is certainly persuasive. Having at least some support from the neighbors is persuasive. And I think this does support that overall effort to create a viable kind of business neighborhood, but business district along 51st. So I would share that to recommend approval with a housekeeping amendment for the policy change.
Any other discussion or motion, maybe? Motion?
Move approval with a, with a direction to staff to process a housekeeping amendment for these two policies, these two parcels only.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, eyes have it. It's adopted. We are now on to... Thanks, guys. Appreciate you all coming in. All right, so... We're on item 54, historic. Commissioner Johnson, anything?
So I am very excited to announce, May is Historic Preservation Month. And this month, we will be recognizing neighborhood leader who did, contributed importance historic resource to their neighborhood or provided education of the history of their neighborhood through events and so forth. So at the next, our board meeting, committee meeting next Wednesday, we will be recognizing one of the first annual neighborhood preservation leader. So I am so excited. So it will be annual, so following years, you know, we can promote and, you know, honor so many neighborhoods. So that will be... So that would be our goal.
Thank you. And a sad number 55, Commissioner Haynes, last parks. Oh, thank goodness. No report, last report. All right. Executive Committee, yeah, he's still on parks. Mayor, no, no, I think he, he's getting off parks. Vice Chair and I don't have any executive committee reports, but Director, report.
Okay, thank you. Quickly, first, thank you for your service. When the council term comes to an end, we have a lot of trying to fit six pounds into a one pound hole. And so all of you are part of that good work. I want to acknowledge the land development team who had 52 items in front of you. And that doesn't even include the things that we administratively process. So Lisa, that's off. You were all asking about the parks position, for example. So let me just say that next commission meeting is our elections to boards. And so I will be reaching out to all of you just to touch base on your interest, your participation and your current roles and work out to make sure that our various representations are done well and everyone's happy and all that good stuff. Chairman.
Thank you, Director.
No problem.
Fine job.
Those positions double the pay we get, right?
Exactly. It's two cents and not one cent.
Councilman, last update.
Nothing to report for now, just we're getting ready to start in on all those budget meetings. So we'll stay tuned to see how we do for supporting our staffing and planning as well as in parks, so.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Where to adjourn?